Good evening. Welcome to the Queen Anne's County Board of Education Work Session on Wednesday, May 20th, of the year 2020. We are going to stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Seeing that it is the Memorial Day weekend, holiday coming up, I'd like to have a moment of silence for all of our servicemen at home and abroad, past and present. Thank you all. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda? Oh, excuse me. I need a motion to amend the agenda as presented to include 7.01 public comment.
So moved.
I may have second?
Second.
I have a motion in second. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, I call for the vote on the motion to amend the agenda to include 7.01 public comment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The ayes have it. The motion is carried. Do I have a motion to accept the amended agenda?
So moved.
Have a motion? Can I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in second. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, I call for the vote to accept the amended agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The ayes have it. The motion is carried. We're convening now with our open session with the signing of the LLC amended bus company agreements. Mr. Pender.
Good evening, President Harper, board members, Dr. Kane. Tonight we have the four LLCs for the transportation services contract amendment that we had to restructure due to the COVID-19 pandemic that is occurring now. Our board attorney has signed off on them, Mr. Darren Burns, and also each president of the four LLCs have signed off. So I request if you yourself, President Harper and Dr. Kane, will please sign off on the four contracts.
And we've already done them?
This is what we voted on last-
This is what we voted on last time, yes ma'am.
Okay, fantastic.
Thank you, Dr. Kane, President Harper.
Thank you to all the bus companies, too. Without them, we can't keep the wheels moving, so to speak. Thank you, sir. The continuity of learning plan update under Presentations 4.01. Mr. Peluski, will this also include some discussions about the COVID-19? Is that all part and parcel?
Uh-
Because we all have a couple of questions with some-
Just in general about COVID-19?
Some-
We have not, but you're welcome to ask those. I'm sure if there's any questions as it relates to all of-
Yes, considering it's COVID-19 and continuity of learning is because of that?
Sure, there are.
Okay.
We'll be happy to take any questions and- If I don't have an answer?
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, so as we get started, I'm gonna talk about the first few slides and then I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Peluski when we get down to the part about grading. So as you know, Mr. Peluski is gonna drive. As you know, we've been presenting some updates and today's update is about the continuity of learning plan. We continue to communicate with all of our stakeholders and we communicated last time we met that schools are now closed through the end of the school year. Students continue to learn at home. Our continuity of learning plan, we've gone over this several times. Just want to remind everybody of the structure. We're talking about three different phases here, planning and organizing in the first phase. The second phase, we continue to work on implementing and supporting our students and the work that's involved with online learning. And then, of course, Phase Three having to do with evaluating and making adjustments as they are required. The updates that we have made were contingent upon what the requirements were for MSDE and without going through each and every one of those, again, they are listed on the slide that you have before you. We've gone through this, Mr. P. Did the last time we went over this. You're gonna hear more information today about updates from Tiger Teams and again, you're gonna hear more information about grading. But what I'm gonna talk about is that second bullet and that's teacher expectations and monitoring what is happening in terms of our online learning. So-
Whoops.
Sorry.
You want me to jump into this slide real quick?
Yep.
So, good evening, President Harper. For the record, Greg Peluski, Deputy Superintendent. Just wanted to provide a board with an update. This is our most revised continuity of learning plan. The state of Maryland, MSDE, did come out with a rubric and as a result of that, we did receive some feedback and as a result, we provided some additional information. For an example, they wanted some more feedback on grading as it related to third quarter, except that you all know that at the elementary level, we have trimesters, so that really doesn't apply. So we had to provide some information there. We added some, updated some information, how we're supporting our homeless students as an example, and then they wanted more of a thorough list of the professional development that we've been providing to all of our students. So those were some of the key feedback areas. So those adjustments have been added and they've been updated as of the 14th.
How do we know that the adjustments improved the program? What I've been thinking about is how do we determine that what we're doing is successful? And we're asked to make certain changes, which creates its own little bit of chaos. How do we know how those changes affected the continuity of learning?
So let me just clarify that, Mr. Anderson. It's a great question again. First of all, I think in the document where they were asking for more information was just simply to clarify, as an example. I don't think it was anything about in the evaluation side because there's not in the seven components, they haven't asked us about evaluation. However, they've suggested to districts to begin thinking about that, as we are. And I think that, and the superintendent's getting ready here to talk about a little bit of monitoring, but we're monitoring a variety of different things. Whether that's the engagement, whether through the online platform, whether that's engagement through packets, phone calls home, you know, grading, assignments. I mean, there's a lot of different factors that we're looking at. However, one of the things that we will have to look at going forward in the next academic year is to possibly put in some more metrics, as an example, into our strategic plan. And so the state has made some recommendations and we'll continue to work on that as we go forward. You know, this is unique, but we continue to monitor, our principals continue to monitor and understand which students are not engaged and their lives are biggest concern in order to target those individuals.
It's our biggest opportunity.
Well, it is. It is a big opportunity, but it's a concern if maybe a few weeks have gone by and we haven't heard from a student. Student hasn't talked to their teacher. We've made phone calls home. We're not getting a response. So those are alarming situations. We don't have a lot of those, but we do have some. So I think the schools in support of Central Office is really trying to do the best that we can to look at all those mechanisms to determine who's not on track and then what can we put in place in order to support them. And I'm gonna talk a little bit about that when we talk about the summer.
I would like to, maybe I missed it, but I haven't seen what we presented to Maryland State Department of Education on the components.
Sure, it's-
So I would, it would be interested in seeing what we're presenting to them, what we're trying to do.
Can you send that to us?
It's pretty detailed.
Sure, you have. It's actually been presented to you the last few board meetings.
But I just, component one, you know-
The continuity of learning plan itself.
Just, oh, that's it. Okay.
Yeah, so if-
As you said, we didn't have something right.
We just haven't seen a letter form and what's been sent to them.
Yeah.
And it's-
It's this?
Yep, just hyperlinked it in there for you. It's also on, Mr. Straight is going to put the revised version. So what you want to look for is this May 14th updated version.
Okay.
The first one was April 24th and then this one is the revised version.
So you're saying that, going back to Mr. Anderson's question, how do we determine what we are doing is successful? And then how we're making our adjustments, how do we know it's successful? Only way to monitor that is the home visits, the online, you know, the kids pinging in and saying they're doing this and looking at the packets. That's the only way that we're knowing that they're getting the information, they're understanding, they're learning.
And that's one way.
That's the only way to look at it.
You know, certainly grading, that's another aspect to ensure that students are on track. We have students that are in interventions right now that are reading specialists and math specialists are monitoring. I think schools are doing a really good job of monitoring who is engaged and on track and who might not be. Each week, they're required to turn in an engagement chart to the superintendent and myself. So we're monitoring that on a regular basis where we can see the percentage of students, total number of students, how many students are on packets, and we'll probably talk about this a little bit later, that we've recently seen an increase in the number of packets being requested. I think families are getting tired and possibly some frustration that didn't think this was gonna last as long. So we're seeing those things. We're hearing from our principals, mental health support for families. Families are, you know, it's, people are getting tired.
Yeah, yes, they are.
And we're really trying, fatigued. Thank you, Dr. Kane. And we're trying to take that into consideration, but also have to have accountability, but support, but recognizing that social, emotional support for not only students, but parents, teachers that are-
We haven't even touched the Mental Health Act for this.
No, and we'll talk about that when we talk to Tiger Teams, but you're absolutely right. Or one of our own employees that has four little ones at home, whose spouse lost a job. And they're trying to juggle all that-
Right.
At the same time that we're expecting them to-
Perform.
Right. So I think it's this delicate balance of-
Unfair.
Have to have accountability, of course, but I think there has to be empathy and flexibility because we don't know what's happening at home. And I'll talk a little bit about that when we talk about the student side of it and what students are juggling.
So is it fair to say that come September, if we get back into those classrooms, that is actually gonna be a baseline?
What's gonna be a baseline?
Whatever, what, I mean, we first test the students beginning of September. That is gonna be a baseline to see, you know, that's gonna be a great measurement.
A diagnostic, to see where students are.
A diagnostic tool to see how far, where they are, what they got out of last year at this particular time and then-
Sure.
Any kind of growth?
Gap.
The gaps, how we're gonna be able to determine, because this year's a wash and we're all in agreement of that.
It's not a wash. This year tells us what was, what we did, what we corrected, and how we ended up compared to what was. And it's quite possible that we may find-
I'll try.
Some advantages because our staff will be better trained. Maybe we'll have a better way to deal with children that are stay-at-home by long. The key is where we finished last year, where we finished this year, and to look at the difference, you know, the grade points, attendance levels, some-
Gaps.
As we said, metric. And how we ended up. Did we lose graduates that graduated? I doubt it. What about children that move from grade to grade? Is that different? Are we in some ways slowed in making our third, three-star school a four-star? You know, there are tangible measurements. One of the things, and maybe it's my fault for being a business guy, but I hear a lot of talk, but I don't see any measurements of where we were last week and where we are this week. And we're this week, we're down and this is why we fixed it and the next week, we're back up. This is how you measure the success of a program. I don't have any doubt that we've got the right people in the right places, that we have support of the teachers. I also don't have any doubt that there are sacrifices being made by staff, including those teachers. And I just want to see, and I think the public would like to see, in order that this organization can get its necessary credit, a simple set of this is where we were, this is what we found, this is how we corrected it, and this is where we ended up. And then, by the way, we learned some things along the way that we can employ and make us better even next year. That's all.
And might I add, Mr. Anderson, you are absolutely on the right track. We aren't finished, so we don't have the data that you're asking for right now. Now, on a weekly basis, just as Mr. Peluski mentioned, I do ask each principal to complete an engagement data collection spreadsheet and we talk about, or they documented real numbers, the number of students who have devices that are using them and the percentage and those on learning packets who we've contacted, how many and the percentage that we have not contacted. So that type of data, we absolutely do have.
We know where we ended last year.
Right, but we aren't done this year, so we can't say where we ended just yet.
I understand that. Just as long as we create the necessary measurements that we can compare to the last year. It's like Mr. Fister's deal. You'll notice that points were raised about something that could have happened and people leaving, their income is leaving and we gotta do, you know, some other different thing. So be as it may, I'm talking of, I can't talk anymore.
Yeah, just so you realize, we definitely collect data for this continuity of learning plan. We're not there yet to give you the kind of data that you're looking for.
But I'm just finding you-
That's not new for us. Yeah, that's not new for us. So what we're looking at right-
Sorry, Mr. Peluski.
It's okay. We're gonna come back to diagnostic.
I see you changed the slide, so I'm just gonna jump right in. So what we're looking at right now are teacher expectations and this has to do with some of the conversations and emails that we're all getting from parents and sometimes from students as well, is we, in the continuity of learning plan itself, we absolutely set expectations for the amount of time that students should be and we'll share that slide with you in just a little bit, working on their lessons. So there are some guidelines that we have set already for how teachers work, for how students work, and that's all in the continuity of learning plan. We made sure that we gave professional development so that we could continue to boost that capacity of all of our teachers for online instruction. We asked that they post their continuity of learning plans on their websites, which they have. We've asked them to continue to keep them updated. They're doing a great job with that. We asked to make sure that they are delivering high-quality student learning experiences when they have the opportunity to engage with them online. Now, that high-quality learning experience is gonna be different when we have mailed out a learning packet because there is not a teacher necessarily interfacing with that child through that lesson. What we have asked, though, is that our teachers make sure that they are communicating on a weekly basis with students and their families so that whether, and that's whether they're online or on a learning packet, so that we can continue to assess where children are, what their needs are, where they still are experiencing gaps and those types of things. So that is an expectation. Principals are keeping logs so that they have given teachers first the opportunity to communicate with families and if they are unable to reach families, then the rest of the leadership team steps in at the school. So school counselors, principals, assistant principals, academic deans are all involved in that. Of course, we use Google Classroom on a daily basis for learning activities and I already mentioned the learning packets. We partner with our special education case managers, the teachers do, to make sure that accommodations for students are implemented to the degree possible. We make sure that we are creating those differentiated resources so that we can reach all of our students regardless of what their particular need is. And again, let me just preface that by, to the extent that we are able to because of the online or learning packet situation. Again, connecting with families, making sure that they are receiving that timely feedback for their students and that continued communication, keeping that open with parents. Now, the question becomes, well, if this is happening and if this is the expectation, why am I getting emails from parents saying that I haven't heard from my teacher, you know? And so that is definitely something that we are working with principals on. This was a part of our principal's meeting on yesterday, the expectation that we have, and we've talked with our principals about how they are monitoring. They are getting pass codes so that they can jump into lessons that are online. We certainly can't do the same for students who are on learning packets, but we certainly can pick up the telephone and we can talk to parents so that we can understand what's happening and what their needs are. Now, something interesting that's happening right now, Mr. Peluski, he hit on it just a little bit ago, is we have some families who are preferring the learning packets right now, even though they have internet. Sometimes that preference has to do with, the internet is spotty, but we did get our other 300 mobile hotspots, so they're being distributed and we're good there. We do have accessibility for internet at several of our buildings now. We're continuing to work on that plan, so that's important. But what we're making sure, that we're doing is even for families who are doing the learning packets, pick up the telephone and talk to them, you know? That is an expectation. So even if they're on a learning packet, we have to monitor, we have to make sure that instruction is high-quality to the degree that it can be. We continue to offer professional development and we'll just continue to work on that. It is a work in progress and some teachers are absolutely doing a better job of it than other teachers and we continue to give opportunities for them to grow professionally who are not through feedback from their principal. And I have also gotten emails, as maybe some of you have, and I know certainly principals have, from some students and their questions, you know, have to do with, you know, how much time they're spending doing. I was in communication with one of our high school students the other night and she was laying out to me the courses that she had and she had some pretty advanced-level courses, many of them, and she was spending an inordinate in her mind amount of time keeping up with all of that work. So that was also a part of the conversation that we had with principals on yesterday, is I might be an AP Bio teacher, but this student might have Spanish III, might also have trig, Algebra II trig, and those are all high-level courses. So if I'm giving this student, you know, an hour of homework and the other teacher is giving an hour and the other teacher is giving, that's about five, six hours, you know, that that could, for one day. So we are really trying to, you know, make sure that our principals work with our teachers to understand the impact, the collective impact that that type of thing has on their students. While we certainly do agree that we want to continue to have rigorous learning going on and instruction going on, we want to make sure that we understand the collective impact that it has on students and families. One thing that we didn't mention today already was, yep, we might have a family with some spotty internet or we might have a family that has a situation in the home where there are four or five children and the teacher is, you know, teaching online and, but maybe there's only one or two devices, you know, and everybody can't be on the device at the same time. So if I have to wait to engage in my instruction so that my brother or my sister or my parent can use a device, then that just sets me back a little bit as a student. So all of those kinds of things are things that we are considering and we're asking teachers, principals to work with their teachers on. So we are cognizant of what's happening. In some cases, not all cases, but that issue is out there.
Indeed it is.
Yep. And so the screen that Mr. P. had up before was the expectations about monitoring and the amount of time, maximum student commitment. And as you can see, at the earliest grade levels, the attention span of children and the ability sometimes of folks at home to work through that attention span, you know, may be just a short amount of time, you know? So we're talking 30, 45 minutes. Does that mean that that's the only thing they can do? No. Certainly, you can always read a book, you can work on your math, you know, adding, subtracting, if you're at those grade shapes, all of those things are part of it. We have made sure that we gave parents, we've given parents a ton of resources that they can access when they are either finished with the work that the teacher has given or if they just need something later in the day. There are resources, there are ways and we're certainly not implying that children need to be in front of this computer or pieces of paper in a work packet for six or seven hours out of the day. That's not the intent of this online learning.
But it's happening.
It is happening and that's the acknowledgement. That's why I'm saying what I'm saying right now and we work with our principals and we'll continue to work with our principals.
It's particularly evident in the AP student group when they have those different-
Advanced classes.
That's true.
Yep, yes.
But I think that expectation should be different. Those are college-level courses.
That's right.
So it is expected that they spend more time.
Exactly. It's expected that they spend more time, but we want to make sure that we're looking at collectively what is happening, that impact on that student. So the kid, student might have one, maybe two AP courses, or even if one of those courses is not AP at the high school level, sometimes they can be just as rigorous depending upon what the course is. So we just want to make sure that we are not sending our kids on a downward slope in terms of creating the fatigue that is happening in the household, not only with the student, but with the family that's trying to support that student. Mr. P. is gonna say in a little bit that we are going to be surveying our students and our families so that we can begin to get input, feedback, so that we can make some of those adjustments that you see that we've mentioned in Phase Three. I have been in communication with some families and even before we do the survey, administer the survey, I'm asking, go on, give me your feedback now because we still have a month of school and we can begin to make some changes right now. I'm not asking anybody to suffer through something that they don't have to. We want to make whatever adjustments we can make right now and then we'll be better set for the summer and as we go into next year. So we're gathering that information, but more formally in surveys for students and parents in the coming month.
It raises the question of if there is so much homework here as opposed to the regular school and we're getting taught, you know, one way of looking at that is it's a better preparation for college because it's gonna be harder and more distractions, but again, there has to be some form of measurement.
And you know, the other thing that we have to consider is, you know, because students are working from home, it's all homework, right, at this point? So it's not as if, okay, here's the lesson that we've learned today and in addition, you have an assignment that you do tonight. It's all right now. So there's an adjustment that everybody has to make for that.
I think you're gonna find that people will think that it's classroom is this side of the couch and homework is this side of the couch.
Or the kitchen table or whatever, but point well taken.
Let me ask you a question. When we, especially in elementary school, when these children move, students move next year, September, and they'll be, not grading, but they'll be, see where they are, because some are gonna be farther ahead than others. There's gonna be a learning, I mean, there's a learning gap between students anyway. When they've been out of school for two to three months, depending on their background and what's helping them, is that gonna be looked at very closely so they can be grouped if they need more help or if they're up to speed, they can keep on going and get the other ones up to speed rather than just having maybe 20 students that, you know, five need help and 15 have done their homework over the summer and over this past year? Is that gonna be looked at somewhat?
Yes, and the truth of the matter is that happens anyway with COVID-19 or not. So yes, we certainly do-
I think it's gonna be worse this time.
We do take diagnostic assessments, so we understand where children are. But the good news for right now, that we'll talk about it a little bit, is with our recovery plan, we'll begin to do those diagnostics before the summer is out. So the beginning of the summer, so in offering those opportunities for students to fill in those gaps that we just talked about or to continue to work in advance. So we'll continue to do those-
I'm just worried about the ones that don't have the internet, don't have the parents at home that are, and they've got a lot on their plate, so I'm not downing anybody, but have not stayed up to speed and, you know-
Or cannot.
Or cannot. You know, it's gonna be tough on that thing.
Yep.
The other thing is, this is kind of, this thing you're showing us, it's not on our computer. Is there any way to get that on there next time?
We have no, we have no attachments to our-
No attachment?
To our-
I can see it.
I couldn't prepare on that.
But I'm wondering if I have to go back, where do I find this?
I asked Mr. Peluski, he's gonna email it to all of us.
Sure, Ms.- But can we put it on this next time so if parents are looking at this and somebody calls and says, well, you know, we went over this at the board meeting, go back to 4-01 and it's right on a slideshow to tell you what we're expecting? go back to four dash oh one and it's right on a slideshow to tell you what we're expecting?
Absolutely, so you'll have, Ms. Wright has it and she'll make sure that it gets up there. Now, generally, when we are doing the COVID-19, um, updates at a regular board meeting, we try not to get in front, have anybody getting in front of us before we can. So if we're saying something that's new, it tends to create a lot of questions for people, so we'll tend to put it up right before we are, um, going to present it. This is not anything new, but we'll make sure that you have that, absolutely.
And, and, and have a reference for, for, uh, parents. If they want to go back, they can go back and look at this and.
Yep.
An easy way to get to it, because this was discussed at this meeting. Go back, if you have another trouble, we'll send you to the right, right location.
This is all on TV.
Yeah.
You could just insist that they watch this.
Some, some people don't have TV.
But yeah, we generally have, it's, it's always put up after the board meeting is done. If we did not put it up before, otherwise it's generally on there. Um, but sometimes if people have it well, way in advance, it just creates questions before we've had an opportunity to present it. So we look at whether or not we're giving a lot of new information and whether it's gonna cause a bunch of confusion before we present it. Either, either way, this will be up on, um, online so everybody can access it. And from time to time, I do, in my communications, say, please look at a board meeting and, and I'll say, you can access the board meeting here so they could just click it and, and take a look at it to reference the background story.
Causing confusion, but there's only five board members and I'm sure Tammy can keep most of those under control.
And we're not talking about board members, we're talking about the general public. So if I put something out that's brand new.
So we can look at it and see it.
Even if it's on the, the closed session stuff, because I like to read it ahead of time to know what's, what's being presented.
And we want to, and it, and that would even sometimes create a lot of questions. So sometime, we do it the way we do it for a reason, but you will have this.
Okay.
Um, yeah, this, the explanation just gives, is great. It answers a whole bunch of things I had here that parents have given to me on. In particular, on the, the, they love the teachers and, but, but some of the teachers aren't as engaged and so it looks like you, you've talked to the principals about it. A couple of things that came up off of what you said was, um, just an, an understanding that some classes are better face to face. You get the chemistry and math, some of these people, these students can't get it. It's too hard to understand. So if you don't have any kind of engagement, it's difficult. What, um, parents have been telling me, one of the better things, if they don't do the, um, the old Zoom meetings, they don't have face to face meetings, there, I guess some of the teachers are finding that students aren't showing up for them.
Google Meet.
But some teach, Google Meet, some teachers are actually filming, standing there, making a picture of their presentation they would give in classroom and then linking it to the students. And that has been very helpful for a lot of them. That, and that's almost like face to face, and then they always offer at the end, if you got questions, you know, send me an email and that's perfect.
And some are offering, um, sites that give tutorials so that they can hear, if it's not the teacher, they can hear it being explained. So there are a number of ways that teachers are doing it. But the point is, we just want to make sure that they are doing that. In particular, you know, for at least once a week, having those conversations with kids. If they're not doing Zoom, pick up the phone, um, and call.
They're not doing that, because I haven't, I haven't heard any teachers call it.
And, and they might, they might not be calling because they're getting response back online.
Yeah, it might be.
Yeah, if they're not getting response back online, then yes, they are calling and the principals are keeping a log of that.
The other ones that I had mentioned before is, is what you did say, feedback. And, you know, there are a lot that are not getting any feedback and it's been, what I'm finding and cause I'll get is, wow, my, my, my daughter doesn't even want to do this now because she, she's disappointed, she didn't hear from her teacher, she thought she's doing what. And so feedback, positive feedback in particular for the state of mind of these, these students right now because of this whole thing. The other one is flexibility. Some are talking about how they're, if they're late, they're getting punished. I, I'm not sure that's the, the spirit of what we want to happen with the students. We want them to prod along and do what they can based on their abilities and what they're seeing. This is, I'm talking high school. And, um, and then I've got some, well, I've heard of some, well, I'm, even I have some that say, I know I'm laying out deadlines here because this is an enormous amount of work. It's been very, uh, hard for the kids to even see that. But I've heard them say, but I'm flexible on the deadlines, so just give me what you can when you can. And like I've seen some that had the AP test coming up and the test was coming up. So the, the parents said they just, they stop them, say, focus on the test right now. And the other classes, they let them know that this is what's happening. And they said, okay, as soon as they can get their assignments in for my class. The flexibility is key to the mental wellbeing of the students.
The communication, uh, is also key.
True.
So because if we're talking and we're saying, okay, my child has, uh, four classes and three tests and AP right, right now, that has to be communicated, so both ways. So I always say, you know, um, to a parent, try to reach your teacher. I say to students who email me and they want to ask me about grades and that kind of thing, what my first response is, is you want to talk to your teacher first because I guarantee you there are things that I do not know about your situation that your teacher does. Um, and so I say the same to parents. First stop, talk to your teacher. If you can't get ahold of your teacher, then you must talk to the principal because that's the, you want people who are close to the situation, um, and can work with you. If that's not working, contact me, contact Mr. Peluski. We will definitely step in, um, and we've been doing that. So first things first, talk to the teacher because I can't tell you your child's situation better than the teacher can. But if you can't get the teacher and you can't get the principal, see me, see Mr. Peluski.
Yeah, and I, I'm more worried really, the biggest thing, I think what I talk to predominantly are parents that are totally engaged with their students. And so if they're having some of these issues that you just talked about, it's, I worry about the ones that don't have the engaged parents. There are students that are babysitting for their siblings.
Absolutely.
And there's a whole bunch of stuff they're not engaged.
And that's why you see this look like that.
I worry about that, okay. How many, just so, how many are missed completely?
We've got about four percent of our seventy-eight hundred, just over seventy-eight hundred students.
And we have not gotten contact with?
Not consistent contact.
Okay, has everyone been contacted?
So, so for example, um, let me give you the, the best case scenario for this inconsistency piece. Sudlersville Elementary School. All of the third and fourth grade students at Sudlersville Elementary School, I think it's about ninety-six of them, have a device. We probably have eleven percent of them that want to actually use the device. So the families there want to have a paper packet. They contact maybe a hundred percent of the families one week, maybe ninety-six percent of the families the next week. So there's this, you know, flexibility in here where each week we're collecting the data, but each week it may be a little bit different. Somebody we're not meeting up with, maybe the family has moved, but we have some folks that go out, our PPWs go to homes, our principals go looking for kids. Um, all safe, you know, of course, they already know they're not going in anybody's house. Uh, we drop, does anybody live there? So we have ways to try to locate folks. We've even worked with our law enforcement partners, um, to do some well checks if we absolutely could not find a child. Um, now their job is not to go searching all over the county for children, but if we have a concern, um, they have partnered with us. So we have a very minimal number of students that we have not been able to find, but there are a group of kids that we can't, we don't hear back from consistently, week over week over week.
Or is that the homeless, homeless kids too that we have been?
It, it, it depends if, uh, a homeless doesn't mean that somebody is on the street.
No, 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 no.
So if, if a student who was designated as homeless is in a location where we know where they are, then we can communicate generally. Um, but sometimes kids move from place to place to place and it's harder to track down.
Correct.
All of these ideas and all of these discoveries should all be put together in some cogent way. Uh, what occurs to me is that there's a difference in the capability of teachers. Well, here's an opportunity to give a teacher an opportunity to gain skills and move ahead. Uh, but this whole discussion has enormous amount of value. And if we can do, not that we are, we're gonna have another pandemic, but there might be some other idea that we might be able to.
Yeah, and I think that, um, we are keeping logs, so we know who we can contact and who we can't. So we've got that. And then that rolls up to a weekly report to me and then I have reported to MSD-E. Um, in fact, next week, MSD-E is going to do a report at their state board meeting about all of the data that they have collected from school districts across the state. So we do keep track of that kind of thing. Um, and we're gonna talk a little bit about how some of our Tiger teams are gonna continue to dig deeper.
I have a question real quickly. Professional development for our teachers, how is that being sent out to them? Are the supervisors doing it, are you doing it? I just want to make sure that the teachers are getting the support they need.
Absolutely, uh, and that's part of our continuity of learning plan. You'll see a whole.
That's coming up, okay.
Well, it's, it's within that linked document if you go all the way to end. Um, there's a whole list of professional development topics by date and by content area. Uh, yes, I can assure you, our supervisors, if not every other week, uh, are checking in with their teachers. They're doing, you know.
Together?
Just about every other. Uh, I will say math does it every week.
I would suggest that they're doing it every week.
I'm sorry?
Wouldn't that be helpful to them if they're not talking to them every week?
Well, I mean.
I, I mean, I don't know, I don't.
Sure, I mean, you know, let, let's not forget, they're, they're handling questions on a daily basis as well. But as far as bringing in a group of teachers at one time, um, they're, they're meeting with them often, uh, answering their questions, coaching them, how to teach online a specific content, concept, um, and, and that support. So I'm confident that they're receiving the feedback that's driving the kind of learning that our teachers need.
It just, you brought it up, I just wanted to ask.
And we're gonna have to do a lot more between now and the opening of the next school year.
Yes, okay.
Well, I have a question, I mean, I guess a comment. On the flip side, the students you can't get in contact with, but the other side of that, the students who are thriving from this out of the box environment, who typically in the classroom, you'd be losing them. They can't sit there that long and stay still and stay quiet and they're probably doing great now. Are we measuring that?
Well, interesting, I, I spoke with a parent recently, said, I absolutely love this schedule. Um, you know, especially for a secondary student, we know about the impact of early start times and education. You know, uh, secondary students relatively tired. My child sleeps in about ten o'clock, you know, and then they work until five or six. So yes, I mean, for some, for some students.
That's because they're up to four o'clock in the morning, playing, you know, War of the Worlds or whatever. Yeah, we get it.
I mean, I just didn't know if teachers were reporting back, like, you know, in class, I'm losing this kid, but right now, you should see the work he's turning in. He is on top of it and he's, he's getting great, great grades right now.
I've, I've had some parents to email me and, I get the same question. Can, can, can I end the school year right now? Because their kids, they're good with their work, boom, 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 and they're working or they're getting ready to go in the military and they're ready to cut them. Can, can you just stop? No, I don't have the ability to do that. And my suggestion would be to continue to do your work, um, because it is being graded. But we do get that, we do.
Because I, I would love to see the percentage of those kids who you just can't get to, to listen to you in the classroom who are just thriving right now.
We'll, we'll, we'll get it.
It may work better if we get an estimate on that.
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Apologize for all the interruptions.
I've been asked to just provide an update on, uh, a grading, probably just more to clarify. So what I tried to do is, uh, what I'm gonna try to do here is explain prior to COVID and then after COVID, uh, if this helps. So prior to COVID, meaning the way that we would normally do business, uh, in our current middle school grading policy. So most of our middle school courses are year long, so on a five period of day schedule. Uh, so there are four quarters, which is probably what we're all most traditionally used to from our own experience. Quarter one, quarter two, quarter three, quarter four, uh, and then a final grade. So in middle school, their final grade is determined by the average of all four quarter grades. So in our middle school policy, what makes up a marking period grade that you see there kind of somewhat in a yellow is a fifty-fifty. So fifty progress and fifty mastery. So, uh, on the progress side, you know, quizzes, you know, maybe smaller assignments, mastery assessments, more unit tests, uh, performances, larger kind of projects. So that is our current, a very visual way, uh, of sharing with you what our current, uh, middle school grading policy is. And then came COVID-19. So COVID-19, which remember that the first school closure happened in, on March thirteenth. So for the secondary students, something to draw everyone's attention to is that the end of the third marking period, uh, ended on April the third.
You mean secondary students, what do you?
So, correct, and so. Secondary, middle and high school.
Both of them, okay.
Yes, those we call, refer to as secondary. Um, so that grading period ended, you remember, we were out for two weeks after the first, uh, initial closure. And then when we came back and we started our continuity of learning plan on April the first, and then the third marking period ends on April the third and the fourth marking period starts on April the sixth. So, and the recommendation from our first phase of Tiger teams was now that, and this is just middle school, in quarter four is that, and this is a change you'll see at the bottom, that one hundred percent of that grade in quarter four will be made up of progress assessments. That's that, the table at the bottom that equals that fourth quarter grade. And then it still remains that it will be the average of all four quarter grades, which leads up to the final grade. Um, and note down there at the bottom that the middle school principal does have, uh, the discretion to offer AP, which is a pass code, to apply, uh, at their discretion, uh, given an individual, uh, student's situation. And that just simply means there's no weight to that. It would be rather than a B in quarter four, it would be a P in quarter four. And so the grade in that case is just averaged on quarters one, two, and three to be able to make up the grade. So to unpack that a little bit further, and this was the recommendation from our Tiger team, yes, Captain Kelly?
Before you move, just on my brain. So Q three, they didn't have that, that grade that was sitting there on March thirteenth? The middle schoolers? Because we went from March thirteenth and then we had a, a week or two gap, probably a two week gap to the thirtieth. And then quarter four started the sixth. So were there grades given between March thirteenth and that point?
There, there, there absolutely could have been and we've, uh, given, uh, what mostly has happened, if a student wanted to redo something, to be able to benefit from that. Um, they had the opportunity, that was a recommendation from the principals, and we gave the teachers the flexibility. So if little Greg, you know, had an assignment during this, you know, two weeks and I'm still keeping up with my learning, but in order to close out my quarter third, my third quarter grade, I could turn something in as an example, um, and to be able to get credit for that.
But there weren't other courses going on or grades going on that period, right? Because.
No, not in the first.
Some kids didn't have the.
Not in the first, it was a direction of the superintendent, it was a state superintendent, that during that first initial two week closure, um, the direction from the superintendent was, A, they're not to be teaching, and two, not to be grading. And that was the direction. At that time, the direction was, let's just keep kids engaged in their learning. So then when we, then we learned the next phase, uh, of the school closure and, and then we knew when we were coming back, which is in, that's why that April first was our initial first date. Remember, at the end of, uh, when we started after the first school closure, we had a couple of days of professional development for teachers and then students were beginning on April the first. So we had a couple of days there, um, uh, all of our schools allowed.
That was two weeks, by the way. March thirteenth to April first was a two, as I understand, a two week period.
Correct, but, but there was no, to be no grading happening. Correction, correct. But as students got back and they were finishing out the third quarter, they had opportunities to be able to submit grades.
That was from the first of April to like the third, because the sixth started fourth quarter.
Correct. So, and, and, and all the principals asked for some flexibility that, that, you know, usually between when we close the grade book and then when we start, we've got to start another grade, but we've got to close out a set of grades. So there's some flexibility in there, um, that principals allowed with their teachers so that, that a student had that opportunity to be able to do that. But the bottom line is that, um, you know, a student wasn't gonna go, whatever that grade was, they weren't gonna go below it. And the philosophy that we've adopted is do no harm. Uh, this is a unique opportunity, let's just make sure our kids are, are engaged, um, and support them in the process.
Example, suppose you have, the first quarter was a B, the second quarter was a B, the third quarter was a C, and the fourth quarter was a C, what's the final grade?
Well, that, I mean, if we did a simple, I mean, it really would depend, I mean, we could.
It would really depend, that's what I thought.
Well, it would depend on the percentage. I mean, you could have a low percentage of a C and you could have a high percentage of a B. And when you average that out, it could be.
Actually, you would be using numbers and not letters.
Well, it's a.
You'd have to, because the average of B, B, C, C is C.
There is, when they get a report card, I'll tell you my son's report card, there's a letter and then the next column is the. There is. When they get a report card, I'll tell you my son's report card, there's a letter, and then the next column is the percentage that goes with it.
Well, that's the point that I wanted to make sure was being made.
The letters represent a percentage range.
Okay.
Great.
I'll do that every now and then because people watch us
And you, and you have to know as well, you know, you may not have known that.
Sure, and this is just a, basically a summary of what we just talked about, is that the only grades, really that are going in the, in the grade book are at 80% or above. And again, those are in the progress assessment area in quarter four. Uh, work accepted after due date is not subject to a lower grade, like we talked about. Um, there is that there's a missing, uh, denotation in the grade book, which we refer to that as NTI, which is not turned in, that will not have an impact. And then that quarter four, which could be waived if it has a negative impact, uh, on a student's grade. But again, there is a designation of a P that the principal has the discretion to use in, in individual cases like we've just talked about. High school. High school has a different, really, grading system. So in our high schools, we're on a semester schedule, on a four-period day block schedule is what we refer to it. So the majority of our courses, uh, are semester courses. So as an example, in the second semester, you have a quarter three grade, uh, which, let's just say in this example, is an A. Uh, we refer to that as a continuation grade. Some refer to it as a sliding grade. Some refer to it as a, um, a, a, uh, cumul, accumulative grade. Meaning that if I have an A at the end of the third marking period, it slides as I begin the grade or quarter four, I start with that A. As in the other middle school where you start fresh at the beginning of that quarter, which is what we're probably all familiar with. Then there is a final grade, and that gets calculated to determine the final grade. So if you go all the way to, I'll start from the bottom and work my way up, how a grade is, is calculated. 45% mastery, 30 to 40 progress, 0 to 10 homework, 15% final exam, which equals a final semester grade. The ranges in there allow teachers some flexibility. But when you unpack the marking period, you see for the marking period grade, what is absent is a final exam. So once COVID-19 happened, um, uh, let's explain what the recommendation from that Tiger team and what's being implemented. So again, semester-long courses. So again, that quarter three grade that was a C, that became a continuation grade, beginning on April the 6th, that started out as a C. In this case, use the example, the child improved their grade to a B. Uh, we had waived all the final exams as part of the, uh, grading policy, and then that would stand as a final grade of B. The recommendation there from the Tiger teams, uh, was to, rather than all those different percentages, was to make the secondary, uh, or those quarter three and quarter four grades 100% progress assessments. Again, waiver of the final, uh, final exam would then equal, um, how a grade gets calculated for the semester grade. Again, uh, the principal has the discretion, uh, depending on the individual, uh, situation of an individual student to award an I. That has always been in our grading policy, uh, which is an incomplete. A child would have an opportunity, uh, in this case, our students have the opportunity all the way up until the middle of October of 2020 to be able to turn that I either into a pass or to be able to accept the grade. And one of the things that we provided, which I think is, 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 was the right move to make, is to provide options. Uh, the student can take the grade, uh, if they've been working on that. Uh, the student could take an I. We've talked about many situations where students, uh, are in and, and maybe they just need additional time. Or there might be a student, uh, maybe that started out with a B, and given their situation, they slid a little bit down to a D. I might want to take a pass because that's not going to be calculated into my overall GPA, and therefore not have an impact, but I still get credit for that individual course.
I have a lot of questions on this part. Okay, um, on Q3, the grade was locked at March 13th, and then?
So we refer to as, as, that, that's a quarter three grade.
Quarter three, right, that's hold it at Q3. Then from point March 13th to April 1st, or April 6th, basically, where you start Q4, none of those
Same, 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 same thing like middle school. So, so for that two-week period, right, under the direction, no grading, no teaching.
As of April 1st?
Uh, so we'll, we'll take it in chunks.
Okay.
First closure, no teaching, um, no assignments to be graded. Then when we start our continuity of learning plan, April 1st, a couple of days before the end of the third quarter, uh, we've given, uh, teachers the opportunity that if a child wanted to turn in an assignment, they could do that to help improve their grade, and to give that flexibility given that time. Um, so that Q3 grade is the one then that slides or continues now starting grade four. So in this example, if, if I had the C, um, uh, you know, at, at March 13th, and then as I got to the close, if I added in some assignments, maybe I boosted a little bit. But the notion here, it wasn't going to go to a D. It wasn't going to go backwards. And that's part of our philosophy about ensuring we're not doing any harm, that kids' grades aren't slipping back. You can only improve going forward. That C now starts on the clock April 6th. That's what I start with in my second semester grade. So in this case, I'm engaged with my teacher, I'm working, I'm turning in assignments, I've raised my grade to a B. And so, and I could continue to do that. And in this case, then as they, you know, the, the exam gets waived, so there's no 15% calculation, and slide into their final grade.
So the B, the B, I mean, Q4 is sitting there with lots of assignments. Okay, now what's happening in Q4? What if all these assignments are getting graded?
They are.
And, and it slides back. How, how do they
Do, do, do no harm.
What if it's
Do no harm.
So Q3 is the, the answer. What if there's a C in Q3?
So it's, it's
And then the person has, like you said, gets to a B, um, at the beginning, say at the beginning. So, but then they start getting graded all along for the whole Q4. Or is that, that cannot bring the grade back to less than that C on Q3?
That's right. That's, that's the do no harm.
Okay, the do no harm back to only that grade.
Because that's the Q3 grade which makes up that period of time in that marking period. So as that, and again, as we started April 1st, child gets to turn in some assignments, um, that's what my grade is. Um, again, the, the notion here that what we wouldn't want to happen is that a child's grade, in this case in Q3, goes from a C and now we're in Q4, it slid back to a D and back to an E. So
But your, your B starts, I'm confused with your B. Your B in Q4.
So, so, okay, so
Is that the new
Yes, yes.
Highest grade or lowest grade you can get?
Hang on, no.
Okay.
So, so envision that there's no letter grade there in Q4 for this example. So I start Q4, April the 6th, I ended April the 3rd with a C. I start April the 6th with a C. Now that, that's what we call that sliding or that continuation grade, um, cumulative grade, if you will. Now I'm in quarter four, and I'm working on my assignments with my teacher, and I'm engaged with my teacher. And in this case scenario, the, the child increased their grade to a B. And then therefore with the final exam waiver, that ends up sliding over into being the final grade. Now, again, we talked about that there could be different scenarios, meaning a different child situation where, let's say, I, again, I'm quarter three, I have a B, not to do any harm to that, um, but as they move forward, maybe recognizing that their grade had been, been slipping, um, they certainly, depending on the situation, they can either take their letter grade, which will be on their transcript, they can get, award a P, which is pass, you get credit, but no, no GPA, no impact. Um, or you have the I. Maybe you need some additional time, or maybe you're not engaged. Um, and it really gives a lot of flexibilities to individual students, depending on where they are, um, and, and that work that they're doing, uh, with their, with their teachers.
Okay, so the next question is, when you went from mastery to pro, progress, that impact Q3? The Q3 grade that's sitting there or not?
So, again, so when that conversion takes place, do no harm. So if it would have been an event that it would have done harm, then that's, that grade should be eliminated or, or exempt, if you will. So it's not taking the child further than what they were in Q3.
What if it increased?
Benefit of the doubt, I would think. Absolutely.
Did that change that Q3 C to the higher grade, once progresses were changed, or masters were changed to progress?
Well, I think, you know, we, if, if we're looking at it, you know, again, that would be on an individual basis. We'd have to be looking at a, a specific student's grade book.
But that's my question, is
I mean, a teacher's grade book.
Does it move that grade, or is that C, a Q3, right there, locked in stone? Or if the mastery and the change to that process made a new grade in Q3, basically, as the basis to
Sure, if it, if it, sure, if it, if it, if it made a new grade, sure, in, in an improvement.
Improvement.
Not a, not in a, not going backwards. Again, do no harm.
Right.
We want to make sure that whatever in that calculation, it doesn't go below that. Um, certainly, uh, if it went above that, that benefits the student. Good for them.
They have a new, a new Q3.
Good, good for them.
If it changed
Yeah.
to the positive only. Okay, parents need to know that, because I'm getting cues on that.
Yeah, and, and again, I think, you know, if, if there's individual questions, as Dr. Kane alluded to, the, the very, you know, first place to start is with the teacher. So if there's any question that a parent has or a stu, a child has about their grade is to go directly, because the teacher's the one that's, that's issuing that. And then if that can't be resolved, Dr. Kane said, go right to the principal and to be able to resolve that on their
The grades aren't finished yet, but my next question is the exemptions. Okay, we're sitting in Q4, and there are assignments being made, and the person is not passing them, so it's given an exemption because they don't want to lower the grade. There are a lot of exemptions going on as we go along. And some are not doing any exemptions, and I guess they're going to figure it out at the end. So what is the policy on the exemptions?
Well, if we go into, uh,
Isn't that teacher by teacher?
It, 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 it really, I mean, it, it depends on the individual child. I mean, it depends on the individual child, the individual, you know, grade book. Again, what I would recommend, if there's questions around that, to any parent, any question around that, talk to the teacher. I mean, to be able to understand that individual course, that individual teacher, you know, I don't know what the assignments are. Um, I mean, there's a lot of, there's just a lot of questions to be able to say to an individual. But again, the philosophy here is do no harm. And we want to make sure that students aren't going backwards, that they're progressing. Um, and again, you know, and this is where we talk about I, or we're talking about maybe students that are not engaged. Um, and I'm going to share with you in a little bit what our plan is for that, um, that students are recommended, um, you know, for incomplete. And having the opportunity, and I think that's a really key piece here, is that there's a lot of opportunities to improve your grade. There's a lot of opportunities to enhance, whether that's right now, and I would advise taking advantage of that now, uh, or whether that's through the summer.
I do have a, um, it's still unclear to me. Um, there are lots of, as, as a fourth period, classes take, uh, assignment is given, the grade maybe is low, and that's exempted. It happens every, all, a lot of teachers are doing that. Each one is exempted if the grade is low. Um, if it, and I guess it's if it's low, if it goes below
If it negatively impacts, that's right.
Um, but some are not. So the question is, because they, and they said they intend to. At the end of the period, do they then do their exempts? Some are doing them at, from, from, uh, from assignment to assignment. They're making decisions assignment by assignment to, to drop it or not. So that makes a difference in the GPA. I'm talking about the GPA for that class. If you wait till the very end and then see what your grade is, and, and then it automatically goes back to March 13th grade. Or if you omit them as you go along, all they can do is go up. And I think the point was, the intent was, to be sure they could only go up.
Now, I haven't seen that at all. What I'm seeing is, here's your grade for the assignment you just turned in. Here's your opportunity to improve it with my remarks. I'm seeing more of that than I'm seeing any exemptions.
I'm just seeing exemptions all over the place.
Well, clarify all over and
In several, teach, several teachers, the parent, I gotta, gotta talk to me. All the teachers are doing the exemptions as they go along except for one.
And did that parent talk to
My situation, they're all doing it as they go along.
And did that parent talk to the teacher?
Yeah, yeah.
And what did the teacher say?
The teacher thought they were supposed to wait till the end to do the exemptions. So there needs to be some clarification on that. Because that's making, and that will make a difference in the final GPA. They're talking GPA here. The parents are concerned in that.
I'll, I'll, uh,
And I, and I do like that you have the incomplete opportunity, you have all that, and that's all really good. But the specific questions I'm getting have to do with the exemptions.
Wait until the end component. I'll speak with the, I spoke with the high school deans and principals the other day. Yep, but I can, if, if there's some confusion around that
And if there's flexibility on the teacher to make that decision, so be it, and that's fine.
Yeah, let me, I'll, I'll, I'll be happy to, I'll be happy to clarify that, so they can clarify that to their
Sure, that'd be great.
Let me ask you one question. When we're talking about these high school, uh, students, math, science, and stuff like that, you have to master certain classes to move to the next one. So I understand Captain Kelly's GPA, but the problem is, in the fourth period, if you have not mastered your core learning of what you need to get past that class, is there a way to sit there and say, you cannot, even though you might have a, a C average or B at the end of the third quarter, but if you haven't filled out what you need to do to move to the next one, is that being addressed?
That's about two more slides, uh, from where I'm headed, Mr. Smith.
Can we get there?
You ask a really good question, which is going to tie your comment in with Mrs. Harper's comment in about diagnostic assessment.
Thank you.
And how do we determine where kids are and where the gaps are? How do we help fill?
I think we talked about that the last time.
Let's, let's move forward then.
Okay, and I think we kind of hit on the grading.
We hit all that.
Yep, let me, I'll, I'll keep moving. Um, I know there was a suggestion about what we're doing for our English language learners. Um, so our EL teachers, as well as our teachers, are meeting weekly with students, Google Meet, phone calls, translators, interpreters. Uh, there's a lot of collaboration that's happening between our, we have five, um, ESOW, uh, teachers that are working with our, uh, classroom teachers daily, uh, especially on EL strategies like, you know, uh, visualization strategies is an example. Um, our EL teachers have created choice boards, uh, which really help them with the, the, the core components, reading, writing, speaking, and listening, uh, in the target language. I can tell you, we have three, uh, interpreters, um, Ms. Morris, um, that have just been doing an outstanding job. You notice that probably every time a communication comes out from the superintendent, it's chased by, um, you know, uh, a con, uh, translation in, in Spanish. Our EL teachers are creating, you know, creating packets, thumb drives, you know, anything to make life easier, uh, for our English language learners. They're supporting, supporting them with virtual professional development with our teachers, um, and then monitoring, uh, those discussions as well. Uh, we have about 339, I believe, uh, English language learners. So the support is there. Feel confident, uh, on what we're doing. There was a question from, I think Ms. Harper brought it up, about career and technology education. Uh, just wanted to provide a brief update in that area as well. Uh, so the State Board of Education approved the following waiver. So, you know, there's an hour requirement in, in some of our technical areas, such as cosmetology, nail technician, barbering, although we don't have barbering, but more cosmetology. So they waived those hours. Seniors can graduate a CT completer with at least four CT credits, which still remains, they still have that. But the waiver is that, uh, seniors enrolled in CT programs, um, can do without the completer, the work-based learning, or the industry-monitored project is waived, uh, from that.
That's risky. How is that helpful to the students?
I was about to say, they still have to take their boards.
Yeah, they, I, I mean, the online, I mean, the hands-on in masonry and, and
Sure.
and construction, you know, uh, cosmetology, hello.
They have to be licensed.
They have got to have their hands-on. So how, what are we doing to help them? I mean, is there, is there summer school, or is there anything?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna
Are you going to address that down the road? Sorry, sorry, sorry.
I'm going to give you an example of welding. I'll give you an example of welding and what we're going to try to do.
Okay, okay. Yeah.
So again, uh, certification tests, you know, they've extended that through June 30th. They may extend that further through the summer as well. Testing's out of that is paid, that's our, uh, federal Perkins funds that's played out of that. So Mr. Teller's been working hard, professional development, uh, which has obviously changed from in-person to virtual. Teachers have been provided with a lot of online resources, and, and the key point here we want to focus on, and you bring up a good point, because within our technical, uh, current technology education, there is a content, what we call classroom component, obviously, and there is a lab component, that hands-on experience. So they have been focused the very best that they can on the content side of that. And then I'll talk about a couple of examples, uh, of what we're planning for this summer. Okay, let me take a tester out in here.
Would you like some water?
I've got, um, Mr. Mr. Pfister told me to take it with me this time, so Mr. Smith didn't have to deliver it. Okay, so let's talk about the summer and let's talk about, as, as all of you have alluded to, and that is the target, what we're calling our targeted learning recovery and universal mitigation. So as we transition and close out this year, we go through the summer and then we open up next school year, recognizing we have some students that have some gaps. And this plan is to address how to close some of those gaps. So I'm going to provide you some comprehensive, and again, what I'm going to share today is also part of a proposal, which is going to be an action item about the Edmentum platform that will seek approval with CARES Fund this evening. First of all, let's talk about definitions so we get the language correct. So when we refer to targeted learning recovery, we're talking about specific programs that are designed for students who have been identified pre-K through 12 that have not engaged or had limited maybe engagement during this timeframe of continuity of learning. So in grades pre-K through eight, which will be identified by their individual teachers, again, part of the monitoring process and their school leaders. In the, in the high school side, which is grades nine through 12, if every student receives a letter I, they would be individuals that we would, we would target for our learning recovery program over the summer. When we talk about universal mitigation, we're referring to universal learning programs that are available to all students regardless in a given grade band. And, and that is really to design or really to reinforce individual skills. Could be reinforce content, could be to extend content, could be to accelerate, could be to enrich, depending on the individual needs of the student. So ExactPath, which is a platform, which is provided by Edmentum, which is a vendor, we would like to be able to offer this to all of our students K through 12. It has a diagnostic assessment to it and it's in the areas of reading, language arts and mathematics. And the interesting thing about this, and probably to try to give you analogy to make it simple, is that if you're driving down a highway and some highways have some potholes and some highways have a lot of potholes. The diagnostic assessment allows to determine where the individual potholes are so the child can get support to fill those potholes, to have a smooth path forward in their content. In a nutshell, that is exactly a, a very high level, simple, simplified definition of really what ExactPath is. And there's a lot of data analytics behind it, but essentially that's it. And we want to be able to offer that for all of our students K through 12.
Do you have a projected cost?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So I'm going to talk about these last two slides, which is what's part of our targeted plan for learning recovery over the summer? And then what is our universal mitigation plan for over the summer? So the first part is to really chunk this into grade bands. So the first part is our youngest learners. And here, developmentally, for targeted students, again, students that have not been engaged or maybe limited engagement, we'll be creating project-based activities by our central office staff. Those materials will be mailed directly to homes from a supplier that we'll work with and they'll be monitored by a QA CPS teacher. In grades three through eight, students will be required, again, ExactPath in reading, language arts and mathematics, to engage in that platform that will also be monitored by a QA CPS teacher. In grades nine through 12, students will be required to complete unit recovery. So if you're looking at a whole course, there might be some specific units, again, in quarter four where students haven't met the expectation in that grade level. They'll be monitored by an MSD certified teacher, so this will be actually provided by the vendor. We actually use Edmentum in this case right now in our summer school and our credit recovery where they're assigned a teacher. We also use it through the, the school year in the event that we can't offer a course because of low enrollment. I had a case this year, we had an AP French student. We weren't able to offer that class, but we were able to use this platform to be able to support the student. So for courses that are not available in the platform, here's our welding example. The district is going to develop projects, performances or assignments that will be monitored by a teacher. Right now, we do have a request from Queens County High School that we may be in need of a potential to have, over the summer, this kind of unit recovery in welding. So in the platform, they don't offer welding, so we're going to have to homegrown that in order to fill for that particular student. Again, our plan for targeted, so again, we know where the gaps are, but we're providing opportunities to be able to fill those gaps.
When will this be done? When will these tests be done?
Sure, so we will begin as soon as school ends. And that's why the timing on this is, is somewhat urgent, so that we can put all the pieces in place. We can work with our school administrators. We've already asked to see right now, how many students, we should have it by the end of the week, about how many students are they thinking right now that would, that would be identified for these programs? And then as we get closer, we've only got a few weeks left, so that we can communicate this to teachers, we can communicate it to our administrators, but most importantly, our students and our parents.
What's the expected success fail goal in this program? What do you gauge as success for this trial? And.
Sure.
You know, what, what would you think exceeds expectations and?
Sure.
Be, well, this is not working for us.
Number one expectation, there's significant gaps, close them.
How do you measure gap?
We're going to measure gap through the diagnostic assessment that is given through ExactPath.
Measure gap, you have to measure what exists and what changes.
That's what the diagnostic does.
They do that?
Mm-hmm. It's, it's computer adaptive. So it asks a series of questions and measures what the child gets right, wrong, and that tells us what gaps they are missing, I mean, what gaps they have.
Measured against the standard.
Correct.
Correct.
And then it's measured again at the end of the program and the difference, i.e. the improvement, then you decide whether it's something you want to expand.
So can I ask you, can I ask you, so?
We summed that whole thing up in 30 seconds.
You're talking about offering in, during the summer, a program so they have hands-on time for welding? Just to give an example.
So hang, let me, let me take a step back.
Okay, okay.
Let me, let me take a step back. So in, in the platform, which is what we use and, and which is part of the contract that we're proposing for Edmentum, is they have a suite of courses. They have been approved by MSD, they are aligned to the content standards. Some of the courses that they offer are in career and technology education. Wonderful. Some of the courses they don't offer, such as welding. Welding's not one within the platform. So the school's telling us, hey, here's a need, this program can't match it, so we're going to have to work with Mr. Tully and, and, and our teacher to be able to create some additional projects, some additional units for that student to be able to engage in. If, if we go into a, a different phase in our, in the, in the state's reopening plan, you know, I'm sure that the superintendent would probably entertain that we could bring students, especially career and technology education, so you can weld, as an example. You can use those materials. But right now, it is our understanding that, you know, students are not to be in any building. That has been the direction.
So when we get to phase two of the state's recovery plan, then we can start making some decisions about which students we can start to bring back in limited quantities. And so students who have labs or students who have some hands-on component that they need for certification or students that we can't provide their IEP or accommodations in the way that we do it by distance learning, we have to make some decisions about which students come back. And certainly, students that you're talking about would be a part of that.
Well, and here's another question. We're going to have to pay these teachers to come back in. Will that be covered under the CARES Act money? Because they're going to have to be paid extra to do summertime.
I'll certainly defer that to Mr. Fister, but it's my understanding that there are teacher stipends that we could if we put in our CARES. We also have, right now, this summer, when we talk about cost savings, we have school improvement money, we have not used, because schools haven't been. So there's a cost savings in my own department. We will able to disperse those funds to be able to support teachers. So yes, there, there is going to be a stipend. I think right now, up until the end of June, I'm confident within my current budget that we'll be able to spend that money down or use some of our school improvement money. Last I looked, I think we were around $15,000 a few months ago as we went into COVID-19. Normally, we spend most of that as we go into the summer, repurpose that for our Leadership Academy. So that's, that, that's a significant amount of money for, for teacher stipends. But there is, and I'll certainly work with Mr. Fister, if in our CARES budget, that we do add some additional stipend money through the summer.
Because it's directly to COVID, I mean.
A, a, absolutely. It is a direct.
Why we wouldn't be able to use it for that?
Yes, I, I agree.
Your contract only does math, language arts and reading. So what happens when, say, a high school student gets an I in a science or a social studies? What happens then?
Yep, so let me go back.
Wait, even your foreign languages, I thought that was on this platform.
Yep, yep, it is. So the student, the student that gets the I, as an example, so that's letter three. So the student that gets an I in grades nine through 12, so if it's in a science class, we'll assign them that particular course with the particular modules that have been approved by the supervisor with support of the teacher. And then they're assigned a teacher, not one of our teachers, a teacher that is Maryland certified by the vendor. That student completes, and we're working this out, those level of details with our academic deans, will receive a grade after completion of those units. And so we'll have to work, that information's got to go to the teacher and go to the dean that in a case that this child has been successful in that, to be able to be factored into. Now, the next part, which is universal mitigation, which is if I passed, I got a B in, in a science class, but yet I still have some gaps. What we want to be able to do is to be able to offer that same course to a student that's getting a B just as equally as a student that's getting an I. So that there's opportunities for skill enhancement, content enhancement, filling in any gaps. And this, and this goes to the question of, you know, I've got a B, I've got a next prerequisite course. Here's an opportunity to fill in some gaps before you take that next level of, of the course. So within the contract, by purchasing ExactPath, which is the reading, language arts, we've been able to secure an unlimited amount of licenses for any of those students. And that's kind of the beauty of this in our, in our targeted learning plan is ensuring the kids that need it the most, but wanting to offer it to all of our families. And I know I was speaking to a principal the other day and he was, you know, talking to a student saying, look, you have multiple opportunities to, to enhance yourself this summer, you know, take advantage of it. And that's what we want to be able to offer to families and students.
The contract is going to include the cost of that teacher, Maryland state qualified teacher?
Yeah, we, we have those licenses now, so we have.
You said the contractor will provide the teacher.
Correct, so in, in, so we currently have a contract with Edmentum. So in this platform, which is what I'm particularly talking about, where that teacher is assigned, we currently have that contract. We have a limited number of licenses where we can assign that teacher. We don't have enough to be able to go beyond the students that are getting an I, that we can offer it to all students. So as part of the negotiation of the contract of getting ExactPath, which is, which is unique because it goes through K-12, we've been able to secure an unlimited amount of licenses that we're able to offer that. But we'll certainly have to, you know, check in with those students, even though it'll be independent. We're still going to have to, you know, we'll be monitoring that cert, of course, through the summer.
That's just an online course then?
It is.
For them, okay. And will the, will the teachers then, as, as Mr. Smith was wondering, the teachers then identify these weaknesses, even if they aren't to the level of getting an I? To let the student or parents of the students know this is available for your student to improve on?
Let me make sure I understand your question. So, so when we go to look at a, a course, a science course as an example, the standards, although they might not be in the same sequence that we're teaching, but they're Maryland college and career readiness standards, next generation science standards, if you will. Our supervisor and our teachers that teach that course can say, oh, these were the course, these were the units I was teaching in unit four. We're going to pick these three units or these three modules that will be able to, A, offer any student that wants to take advantage of that, or the student that has an I, it's going to have to be required to take those three units that are selected. And then that way, that helps the teacher, you know, to be able to see that student's completed that or not completed that. But I, I think, you know, this is a, this is a tremendous opportunity and I think it's really going to help that as we go into the fall and we reassess and figure out where students are and to really figure out, did these programs really make the impact that we anticipate that they are? Again, at least, you know, Mr. Anderson asked the question, number one, fill gaps, but we also want to maintain, if not accelerate in some other cases.
I mean, and this is probably more to John than it is anybody else. We will have some revenue left over at the current year because, like you said, you haven't spent some money because we haven't been in school. It could be a one-time cost for the summer. Is there a problem putting that money in next year, even though it's not a real cost, just pulling it out of a, a, a separate fund balance?
We're talking about here?
Yeah, like.
We're looking at CARES funds to fund this and then it would become, need to be continuation, would need to be part of our operating budget that we would have to fund.
The CARES would hopefully have, but it would just be like a summertime, one-time cost.
The CARES fund?
Yes.
But then to continue the process?
Recurring.
This isn't a one-time solution, this is something I think we're going to move, would like to move forward. Then it would become a request in the operating budget to continue this program.
Past the summer.
We'll have it.
Past June 30th of 2021.
We'll have it.
Talking about 14 months.
We'll, correct, we'll have it until August of 2021.
Which is not on here.
If we have a fund balance, which we have had in the past this year, we can earmark that as a one-time cost to fund this for next year.
Right.
Okay.
So a couple of questions. You said that only the students with an I would be using the ExactPath? Did I hear that correctly?
No, no, the students with an I, so we're talking high school.
Okay.
Right, so, so high school, because that refers then to the transcript.
No, you don't have to go any further than that. That's all I wanted to hear, that, that it's not just the students. Because in this, in this contract here, it says that all students would have access to this extent, this ExactPath.
That's, that's exactly right. So I could be an I student, I could be an I student, nine through 12, I'm taking content-specific.
I, I don't need to know all that. I just want to make sure that all students have it. Yep, okay. Did we look at any other vendors besides Edmentum?
We did.
Because you know, in our.
We did.
We're supposed to look at, at least have bids for three.
Correct, and that's why this is sole source. It's the only vendor that offers that up through grade 12.
This is the only one, ExactPath, that is currently available that does all of this?
Through, through grade 12, correct. And to your question about 14 months, in the contract.
This license says only 12 months, so are they going to give it to us 14?
So if, if you, yeah, if, I think if you look on that page or the one, you're going to see where it says one month and no cost. Then you're going to see another where it says, I think it's K2, if I know that contract well. And then it has 3.5 and it's going to say zero cost. So you'll see where it's 12 months and then one month for that level and one month at the other level at no cost, which is 14.
So 13 months.
14.
14.
Two months, two months are free?
Yes.
I see the date.
And then the whole year.
Yep, that's correct.
That's good.
Right, we were able to get, we were able to get that free and then we were able to get all the courseware to be able to offer that for all of our students for free.
And world language is in here?
It's one of, it's, it's one of the courses that, and I don't know all those languages off the, off the top of my head of what they're offered, but there is a, there's a course guide in which we're going off of. And so our supervisor, matter of fact, they're working on that right now of looking at those courses and to, and to start to identify those modules.
So when they say they're only offering three PLC coaching, virtual coaching, in the course of 12 months, they're only offering three opportunities for that? Or three teachers are? I'd just like to make sure that we have enough coaching to help.
I, I.
The teacher, just look into that.
Yeah, sure. I, I believe what's there will be adequate for our needs.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't get specifics. I mean, it's, so, I mean, it's just a couple of questions down the road. I apologize. I've just got into it. Okay, sorry. Anything else?
Uh, yes, I do. I'll, I'll be brief.
That's okay.
Is this, we're going to go into the future here in a minute. So, and I'll end with this. So the last time we spoke, we began once we knew from the Maryland State Department about the Maryland's Recovery to Education Plan. So we had gone to work and the last time we had spoken about what's our response going to be, which is going to be our district, what we're going to call our Roadmap to Reopen Plan. which is gonna be our district, what we're gonna call our Roadmap to Reopen Plan. And we talked about Tiger Teams, that was kind of phase one. We just moved into Tiger Teams Phase Two yesterday, which include a variety of different employee stakeholder members. Our teams are made up of principals, assistant principals, school counselors, teachers, operations, a whole host of stakeholders into those six key strategic areas that from the literature, when you look either globally or nationally, these are the six kind of themes that emerge in strategic areas that we need to think through in order to open schools effectively come the fall. Those teams were launched yesterday, they're all working. Their first check-in point will be June 5th. Their final recommendations, depending, we know some of the recommendations are gonna have to roll through the summer, will be June 12th. So you can anticipate probably sometime after that, we will be providing you with an update on some recommendations as we begin to open the fall. And so this is gonna come everywhere from the operation side, you know, social distancing, transportation, food service, all the way to our delivery model of, in a partial reopening, what's that look like? If we've got to go completely online, like we're doing right now for secondary, but bring in elementary students, maybe on an A week, A week, B week. It's gonna be all those recommendations that are gonna come forward to the superintendent and her executive team.
I have a recommendation on this too. In particular, the accountability grading, well, the grading thing and the technology and the connectivity. We have lots of lessons learned from what we just did or are doing, yeah. And I think input from, you say stakeholders, I think there are parents that could really provide you good input to that in addition to students. Maybe an idea is one of the recently graduated students this summer to work with the team, a few of the really sharp ones, because they would provide really good information of what it was like to be living that.
Sure.
You know, if you didn't want the parents, the parents hear from the students, the parents get frustrated. But students, I'm thinking student, new graduates would be perfect for 12th graders, you know, that are, because they probably don't have a job this summer, and they would be very helpful for helping you guys.
Sure, I assure you, Captain Kelly, all six of these are sharp teams. And in fact, one of the deliverables in Team Two is to create a parent survey, so, and a student survey. We want to hear, you're absolutely right, we have learned a lot of lessons. This hasn't been perfect. There are things we can learn from. And I think that's why involving teachers a part of this, that see the organization from a different point of view, is, and that's what they're doing right now, they're generating a list of questions. And then those questions are gonna turn into themes, and then they're gonna start to go to work on solutions for those answers, and then bring recommendations to the superintendent on what they're recommending to implement. And we'll be, we're anxious to share that with you. We're teetering on about 100 days until we open schools.
You keep saying that, you say that every time.
But to what Captain Kelly was saying, are, is there a parent and a student physically on these teams?
As a stakeholder, major stakeholder in your evaluation?
We have not put a, we've not put a parent or a student on there. I'm not sure that these teams are for that. However, we want to hear the voices of our, and I think we can do that through a survey. We can do that through a variety of different input, because they are important. You know, for an example, when I anticipate Tiger Team Two that comes up with a recommendation, like many districts are, of different scenarios of a partial opening, if it's an A-day, B-day schedule, or if it's an A-week or B- we're gonna have to get parent input on that before we implement it, so I think.
Maybe, maybe a, I read that Michigan was putting in a Return to Learning Advisory Council. Maybe that would be useful, maybe not to permanently be with the team, but have an advisory council to meet once in a while to say, you know, when they hear what the teams are deciding. I just think they should be more active than just a survey, because you know how surveys go.
Our survey percentages are not very high.
Yeah.
On three of these teams, I think are appropriate to have a parent or student on. Team Two, Team Four, Team Five, because they can tell you what the learning and continuity has been like. They can tell you what the social and emotional support has been like, and they can tell you what the connectivity has been like, and they've been living it.
Good point.
And that would, then you would have to have broad demographics. You'd have to have some from North County, someone from the South.
Correct.
You know, someone in the Graysonville, Queenstown area, so, I mean, then you're talking about how many more people on a team.
No, I mean.
And I'm just giving you, I'm being devil's advocate here.
Just so that they've got, they're involved in it, they want to be involved in it. And I don't think we should be omitting them, they're major stakeholders.
Oh, you're hearing it right from the horse's mouth right there. I mean, if you've got them in the room, you're hearing what they've been going through. You know, Monday might have been great, but Tuesday it rained and my connectivity was shut. So, I mean, you're hearing what they're going through at home.
Yep, we can certainly do that, no problem.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Are there any questions, further questions?
You just come so far.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, this is.
You're welcome.
Thank you for putting up our questions.
Answered all my cues, listened to my cues.
Appreciate your feedback.
Reality.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Pfister.
Would everyone like to take a break? I mean, we've been at this since 5 o'clock, take a short break, is that all right, Jeff? Can we do that? And we're back at 8 o'clock, thank you. I apologize, Ms. Kavanovich, we'll get to it as soon as we can.
Got to Mr. Straight. Okay, we're back. Thank you all very much. Next, the presentation's 4.02, Bus Patrol Red Light Runner Cameras, and we have Mr. Pinder and Mrs. Kavanovich.
Thank you, President Harper, board members, Dr. Kane. I want to give, it's for informational purposes tonight. We're not doing any kind of vote, but we've spent a lengthy process of working to get the county commissioners to pass an ordinance where we can put the red light runner cameras on our buses. And before we get into the presentation from Bus Patrol, I just kind of want to give you just a quick little history of where we've been. We've been monitoring the statistics for about the past five years of every time a bus runs past a, I'm sorry, not a bus, every time a vehicle goes past a bus with its red lights on. Within those five years, we started track with sixty-seven times in one year. It's gone up to a hundred and twelve. And then this current year, as of January thirty-first, we had ninety-two. Now, that is just in six months. If you map that out for ten months, you're talking about a hundred and fifty times just in our county that's happening. Margaret Ellen, the supervisor-
Let me rephrase that. So from January twenty-first to March thirteenth?
No, ma'am. From the beginning of our school year-
Oh, oh, oh. Okay, thank you.
Till January, the end of January, we had ninety-two. What I'm saying is if you took that, it's about fifteen per month, and you average that out, it would be about a hundred and fifty.
Okay, thank you.
And those are the ones that the bus drivers are calling in every day. So we have, Margaret Ellen, her staff has sheets where they're tallying everything, the location of it, the bus driver, the road, students that were on the bus. So we document all of that. With that being said, we're looking for one more tool in our toolbox, is what this is. Is this program going to stop this from happening all the time? No. But again, it's one more tool that we can use. Currently, we try to design all of our bus routes so that the children get off on door side. You know, they're not crossing the road. That's not always the case, but you know, you might be following a bus sometimes. You're like, hey, they're going a little bit farther than they normally do, and they're taking this route. Well, it's to get to that child's house so they don't have to cross the road. Now, with that being said, each year we apply for the Maryland Center for School Safety Grant, and Margaret Ellen is very successful with that, receiving that grant, where we can have deputies and state troopers and Centerville PD follow the school buses, ones that we've identified in high area concentrations. Now, that's one-
Just excuse me.
Yes, sir.
What is, and where might be, off the top of your head, hot areas?
All right. So everybody thinks-
Not really to throw anybody under the bus here.
Yeah, exactly.
No pun intended.
A lot of times people think that you're looking at more traveled roads, highly traveled roads.
I would think opposite.
All right. Well, that's actually absolutely correct. Three hundred, three oh two, two thirteen, Route eight.
I knew you'd say Route eight.
Are problem areas. Right in front of the bowling alley, up towards Kingstown, is a problem. So again, you only have one police car, maybe at a time, following a bus, and you know, that's not as efficient, but it is another tool in our toolbox. Every day that I sit in my office or in my car, I got my bus radio on, and every day you hear a bus call in for something similar to this. And the ones that scare me the most are when the car goes to pass on the shoulder.
Yes.
We actually had one student who had to jump up in the wheel well-
Oh.
And missed being hit by a car. You have so many distracted drivers going on, you know, whether they're texting or on the phone. Maryland, in April, they always do a one-day sample from across the state of all the counties of red light runners. This past year, you're looking at roughly three thousand eight hundred and twelve. That's one day. All right. That shows you the problem, the magnitude.
This, did I hear you say red light or the school bus violation?
Red light. I'm phrasing it in red light runner. When they have their red lights activated, stop arm out-
I'll learn.
They're flashing, sorry, sir. They're flashing. That's what I'm referencing. A lot of times when the bus drivers call in, what you hear is, hey, it was a green truck. It had one person driving. The first tag number, two digits, were six-three. You know, they're watching the students. They're watching, you know, the cars coming. It is hard for them to get an actual description. Sometimes we've been very lucky where another bus is following, and it's like they call it in and go, hey, I got the number, boom, boom, boom. But a lot of times that's not the case. And then if we do identify somebody, the bus driver has to go to court, testify, yes, that's the person there. That's the day that they're off the bus. So I'm just trying to lay out where we've been. The county commissioners, the state attorney Lance Richardson, our board attorney Darren Burns. We took about a year and were able, they passed the ordinance. Let's see, it was nineteen oh nine, back in August of two thousand nineteen, this past year, where we were able to install these. We've been searching through companies and doing our research on this so that we feel like we have the right fit. We've also worked with the sheriff's department, the enforcement program, because they're going to be a huge part of this. And we're trying not to put any more work with what they have going on. Their SR program, Lieutenant Meele has been very supportive with us. One of the other reasons we were very selective, some companies only want to have the cameras on certain buses. All right. We want them on every bus. I don't think that I could ever justify having just selected a bus. You know, every life is important to us.
Routes change.
You're right. So we have let several companies analyze our data, analyze our routes. We would like for Bus Patrol to do a presentation tonight, just so you have a basic understanding of what we're looking to do moving forward.
Okay.
This company does have a proven track record in Montgomery County, Prince George's County, Carroll County, and Baltimore County. It's not somebody that's, you know, just a fly-by-night. We're talking in PG County about fourteen hundred units that they have installed. The other part to keep in mind tonight is our interior cameras, companies are able to bundle items together, all right? Our interior cameras, that has nothing to do with the red light runner camera, all right? They're fifteen years old. They're due for replacement. Going through this process, and I don't want to take away from the chief executive officer here, but we're able to tie the camera system that we want to go with into this project, which is about a three hundred thousand dollar savings for us, all right? And you'll see out of the Capitol side how that will work. Right now, our cameras that we have, the principal has to go pull the tape out. Every time something happens, or if Margaret Ellen gets a phone call, you know, a bus we think was speeding, blah, 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 she has to go pull the tape. New system, you can remote into it. You have access to that. You can also use the system to calculate miles driven by the buses. So instead of us putting a person on the bus for a manifest to see if the mileage is correct, we're able to use this system called Zonar. Many systems, school systems in the state currently use that system. So we are trying something new here for the first time. We've never had a presentation done remotely. I would like to introduce the chief executive officer, and I don't want to crucify his last name, but it's French, Jean, and you can say your last name, sir.
It's Soulier.
There you go. There you go. Thank you.
All right, ready to go?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Jean Soulier. I'm CEO of Bus Patrol. Like Sid said, Bus Patrol is not a, first of all, Sid, can you see the presentation?
Not yet, sir, no.
Okay. Give me one second. I will. There we go.
You have a good Sid.
Now you should be able to.
Yes, sir.
Wonderful. So like Sid said, Bus Patrol is not a fly-by-night company. Bus Patrol is the most widely deployed student safety technology on the planet. We are owned by the world's largest private equity firm, climate founder. We are going to be deployed between now and December thirty-first on nearly thirty thousand buses across America. We have won every competitively bid RFP in this space for almost two years. And really, the reason we have been so successful is because of our focus on, our focus on coverage. We will never, ever deploy a unit part of your fleet. And we won't do that because we don't feel that a tiled zip code should determine the level of safety they enjoy. If you walk on a school bus today, it doesn't look much different from the one you walked on as a child. And what we're trying to do is find a way to get technological innovation in the place where it can have the most impact. And there's no better place to have a better impact than the area where you get to and from. One of the first things that I talk about in this education is that automated traffic enforcement stays a lot. There is no doubt effectively true, any kind of employment of technology. When you have it somewhere, you're less debt the next year than the previous. School bus is a little different in the sense that it protects lives, saves lives. But morally, citizens all agree that it's very offensive to pass a school bus. And quite honestly, it's shocking to me how often it happens. And so we leverage that, we leverage the technology to show offenders, you know, that their car carelessly putting students' lives in danger, to make sure that they get educated and they change their behavior. Every year, the National Association of State Directors of Transportation and Transportation Survey, Sid mentioned the Maryland component of that survey. There's over a hundred and thirty thousand bus drivers in two thousand and nineteen that participated. The end result was almost one violation per bus per day across America. When you extrapolate that data, that's over seventeen million violations occurring in America every school year. And the consequences are simply getting more troubling. I like to show this data. It was a pilot we did in Allentown, Pennsylvania. The reason I like to show Allentown is because Allentown's not a big city. They have a lot of rural code. And people who were manually tracking, like some of the data that Sid presented earlier, bus driver complaints, they were only tracking a handful of tickets. But we tracked, in forty-seven's pool days, two hundred and five stop-arm violations on averaging over two violations per bus per day in Allentown, Pennsylvania. So what that tells us is this problem is not a city problem. It's not, it's everywhere a problem. Rural problem, suburban problem, a city problem. I'm going to show you some video now from the Allentown pilot. But I want you guys to just look and ask yourself the question, are people, do people care? Does it look like all these cars are even making an effort? You'll see the stop-arm deployed. And in this case, you'll see a city bus. So in two thousand and eighteen, during the student's week, all week, there were six kids that were killed in one week. The National Transportation's eight-year-old, three weeks ago, published a report talking about this specific economic problem and the recognition that it includes or to encourage every state in the country to enable programs for Bus Patrol. In fact, in their presentation, Bus Patrol program was cited. Pictures of our technology were used. And they realized, just like we do, that we can change, we can change the behavior by making sure that every single part of the path of the bus gets to get included. So the one thing I'd like to ask you guys to think about is, what do you do when you drive around and you see a policeman? What's your first instinct?
Slow down.
Exactly, right? My first instinct is I hit the brake. I hit the brake before I look at the speed I was going. And because I do that, I hope not to get a ticket. Imagine we were in still that very street park and every car drives around us with a bus. Imagine if we built that hesitation in people's feet to make sure that they pump those brakes. That one pump of the brakes could save a life. And that's really what Bus Patrol is trying to achieve. I'm going to show you guys a video. This gentleman here, his name is Pierre Rainey. Pierre is from Nissimont Trail, the northern part of Canada. Unfortunately, in two thousand, his younger brother was killed because of a car that illegally passed a school bus. And he worked with a charity and he learned his language to help get his message out. And one of the things that you guys know, that he's lived, the consequences he's lived, is that in cities, this happens more often, but in rural areas, which people pass, make consequence more deadly.
I want people to be scared of school buses, just as they're scared of police cars. On February eleventh, two thousand, Adam was getting off the school bus, which was stopped. The headlights on, stop-arm out, as he was crossing, and the vehicle developed conflict with the school bus and crashed out of the center of our driveway, killing in an instant. My other brother, Alex, he actually reached out to try to grab Adam's backpack because he seen the vehicle wasn't going to stop. I missed it by inches. And basically, it takes your family and destroys how it was. So you never get to go back to that normal life you had before. I want them to be scared of a school bus. You see a school bus, you're going to automatically pay one hundred percent attention to that school bus and everything around it. So stop-arm cameras can be used, the same as photo radar. It's easier on the school bus drivers. It's easier on the officers. I just, I don't understand why people do do it. People will stop for the bus because they'll have fear of getting charged, and it's safer.
But one of the things we know by rolling out these programs is that people stop when we give them tickets. Unfortunately, that's what it takes. And what we see year over year, and what we've seen in Maryland, is reduction in stop-arm violations by between twenty-five and thirty percent per year. And those are the same kinds of reductions, and these, we see them across all clients. So we expect to have the same positive results in Queen Anne's County. The two major things as a company that we focus on are inclusivity, to make sure that technology is made available to every child in every community we serve. And the second piece is that to make everything data-driven. Because the good folks in school transportation, Margaret Ellen, a day in, day out, is looking for, at data and reports in order to be more proactive in how she can provide safety. And the entire school bus transportation industry always talks about safety first. But unfortunately, they haven't been given the tools to act safety first all the time. They don't have the funding. They don't have the money. So Bus Patrol had to come up with a program that was going to make this technology available. So what we did was we created a program that's at zero cost to municipalities, zero cost to school districts. And we put the cost of this technology on the backs of the offenders so that the people who are careless are the ones paying for the technology. Now, the way our process works is the buses drive around. We have an artificial intelligence engine that is loaded on the buses. Her name is Ava. And Ava looks and identifies automatically vehicles that are illegally passing, and she doesn't miss any. She doesn't have fifty kids on a bus or twenty kids on a bus to mind and watch the road like a bus driver does. Her only job is to identify illegal behavior. When the stop-arm is deployed, she goes to work and identifies violations. Then those violations get sent up to our Amazon Web Services cloud, where Ava, again, builds evidence packages. Those evidence packages are reviewed by your police force, your sheriff's department, and it's their local government that decide whether it's issued or not. After they approve the ticket, Bus Patrol prints it. We mail it. We pay for the paper. We pay for the stamp. We pay for everything that goes into supporting the program. And when that ticket's mailed to an offender, they get to see a room, they get a link to a website where they can view the evidence against them. So if a picture's worth a thousand words, a video is worth a million, which is why ninety-five percent of people who view the evidence against them, hey, their ticket's right there online. If people contest, we manage the contestation process and the integration to courts because we want to alleviate all of the work from our partner, students and community. Then the citation revenue is collected centrally, used to pay for the technology components, and then the leftover revenues are shared between Bus Patrol and our partner community. And like I said earlier, paying for the ability to issuing the ticket, pays for all aspects of transportation, which is where we partnered with the vendor ecosystem that is most used in people transportation, to be able to plan routes more- to be able to plan routes more safely, to be able to execute those routes safely, and to be able to enforce the laws. So the data we provide makes, gives, gives people the tools to say, hey, I have a stop that is heavily violated, do I have children crossing there? So if that's the case, Margaret Allen can use data to justify moving a stop and making that experience a safer one for the children of your county. And that's where the integration from the routing system and TransFinder, currently used by the county, to Zonar, the GPS and telemetry data to allow, collect all of the data feeds from the bus, and ultimately deliver it over Bus Patrol's network. So what Bus Patrol is powerful for is everything camera-related and everything network-related. So not only do we have the stop-arm camera that can cover up the eight lanes of coverage using AI technology, but we also have internal cameras that are cloud-connected, where superintendent can access via the cloud video footage more rapidly and efficiently. And student transportation, everybody has to worry about whether a system is actually working or not. And why? Because every single component of the bus is now cloud-connected. We can tell you when a bus needs an oil change. We can tell you when a component is broken. In fact, if a component needs repair and maintenance, our installers and repair people in the commission are the ones doing the repairs. Again, at no cost. The Zonar platform, the strategic partner, they help the operation of the vehicle. All of the telemetry data, the signals from the bus, the air messages from the engines, all the things that could get in the way of a bus being able to safely perform in the crowd. It includes the, in expanding the student M test, parent application, the ability to manage inspections, both pre-trip and post-trip inspections. And then we have the integration of TransFinder. The ability to put a cell phone, an application on a parent's cellphone so they can know when their child is, when their bus is going to arrive, when it's gonna be there on time or late, and when it'll be home. As well as turn-by-turn navigation for bus drivers, be able to manage and train new bus drivers who may not be as familiar with the road. Again, we pack all the technologies into a simple platform for our client. And we don't ask this to come from. And people are always curious as to how we stand with this. And unfortunately, the way we expand business is this happens very, very often. And even when we were doing, excuse me, there are new drivers that come every day. There are transient communities, people moving in and out. There are traffic coming through the county, going into Baltimore, Springfield, counties. And we make it our mission to educate every single person. When we did the modeling for your geography and your route, and when we did the analysis and compared it to all of our existing clients with similar geography, we estimate that we're getting probably six hundred tickets a month. And I know that sounds crazy, but that's what the data is telling us. So the program rev, first retire the technology fees, and then create a revenue stream for your community. And we expect and hope that the revenue will be one to zero. And in the meantime, it will help give you guys more money and more tools to be able to reinvest in safety in your communities in other ways. Not with ending, I mean, we're saving you from not having internal cameras and other things. Over the five-year program, we believe we're gonna give you around six thousand violations. We're gonna capture a few factors that people who violate the law and will generate something through over two million dollars from the community. But more important than anything else is that ninety-eight percent of violators get, don't get a second one. So we'll be effectively changing behavior and making your roads safe places. So that is my presentation, and I'd like to open for any questions any folks may have.
I have two questions. The camera that's installed on the outside, what's the range? I heard you say eight lanes across, what about behind the bus?
So we do track over thirty feet behind the bus and ahead of the bus. We have a hundred and eighty-degree camera. And we can show you that if you'd be interested in seeing exactly how it looks. But right now to see whether cars are, have time. We also have public data, when the stop-arm is deployed, we analyze and vet it for issue or coverage. So we give police all of their tools to see whether a vehicle out of the park or not.
Okay, my second question is, the reason I ask about behind the bus, I live on three hundred, so not only are we seeing cars passing the bus, we see tractor trailers barely stopping in time not to rear end the bus.
Oh yeah, so we, sorry, we do have a rear-view camera. So on top of the stop-arm camera, we have the backup that is looking at your back. We also have a DAP scan for accidents, so for the video footage, be very cold.
Okay, thank you.
Could you lean your screen up just a little bit, we're seeing from your eyes down. There you go. Thank you.
So, I have a question.
Yes, we have another question, sir.
So again, I'm seeing the camera is only on the driver's side. What happens on the other side? Because where I live, I have seen cars go around on the door side constantly.
We have another, yes, we have a camera there.
Okay. Yeah, I only saw it on my one hundred and sixty-degree coverage of the bus. Yeah, that's, okay, so I'm throwing under the bus, that's Route Eight.
Sid, do we own all the buses?
No.
Or do we rent the buses from other companies? And how would we interface with this material on a bus that we are leasing?
So currently, right now, our county buses that we own, not a problem. We have to work with the contractors to install everything on those buses that, you know...
Well, they're gonna wanna share the money.
No.
No. I understand, there's gonna be a lot of other issues that we, we want the money.
The way, the way it is written up is the money is generated and split between the Board of Education. And if we want the sheriff's department, because they're gonna have some time invested in this...
They don't have any time at all to investigate this.
To invest in it. Because they, they're the ones that are gonna, the, not the school bus drivers, the sheriff's department are the ones that are gonna have to view the ticket and the violation. And then they go, yep, this, this did occur, and then they sign off on it. So there's a little bit of time involved with the, yeah, with the sheriff's department.
I would need somebody that knows how to negotiate with the sheriff.
What I worry about is, what about, we have the bus contractors that don't want this on their bus?
They're fired.
Is this part of the inspection process, is county code?
You can't have it when...
We have to negotiate with the bus contractors if they don't want this on their bus.
We can't use them.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Please, please answer that, Mr. Jean.
Yeah, so I'm happy to help. The contractors are very interested in getting our equipment on their bus. Today, when they have their kit, they have to pay for the technology, they have to support GPS, they have to manage their bus, they wanna know, are they consuming too much fuel? Are they managing their drivers? How are they scheduling those assets? So what we do is we turn their bus into a bus, and give them tools that no cost to them. They can use their business to work with them. There hasn't been a single time where we've had an operator not walk the technology. And because they don't pay for it, they're very interested. The other thing is, is bus drivers, they drive around a bus, when they pop that stop-arm open, they have their voice and their horn. When those cars pass at high speed and they have to walk it day in and day out, that's a, that's a, that environment to work in, that is a high security moment. So these technologies also help and protect the bus drivers. They give them a voice, instead of them getting area that a pattern of violation happened and not be able to catch that right there, point down or report it. We're actually giving them a vehicle to hold those people accountable. So I have never met an operator today in my operation company that is that he don't want to help.
How easy is it to remove this equipment if there's a disagreement between the leasing and the lease or?
We, we remove the equipment and we're gonna practice that in state. We do not have to follow the liability of installation. And these bus vendors are all very used to having technology put on the bus. This is hard for the course.
The one thing I see, paramount is safety. I mean, we're talking risking students' lives and being injured. So to me, this sounds like a great idea. It's something that I think all our buses, I don't, I'm not a fan of saying one's gonna get it and one's not. I think it should be mandatory by this, if we pass this, it should be mandatory by this board. And the revenue doesn't really concern me because I like to see us get nothing and have nobody running these buses, buy these buses. That's to me is to deter, it's not the revenue stream. You say we're gonna get revenue, that's fine. I would hope it goes down to the point where it's not, so we don't have this. Because this, and I think it enhances a lot of other things, it could bring some things to the table for these owner-operators to address and help them. But, you know, we are responsible when we pick these children up, from we pick them up to when we drop them off, and this to me is almost a no-brainer. I don't see any, I mean...
Yeah, it's a no-brainer because doing the right thing, you get paid for it.
So let's, let's see, timeframe, so what are we, what are we looking at?
So what, we wanted to do a presentation tonight. We wanted to come back for a vote possibly in June, the first meeting in June, for approval of this. Darren, our board attorney, has the contract, he's reviewing it. I've asked him to reach out to the other counties just to make sure everything's documented. That will enable us to install the cameras and all over the summertime. You know, that's what we're looking for. And each time that, if you recall, we've been in front of the county commissioners for different things, they're asking where are the cameras at, are they installed? You know, with the COVID-nineteen pandemic shutting us down a little bit, it's delayed some things. But, you know, we have it on schedule now. So that's what we would be looking for, would be that approval. And that would give us the time to implement it.
And what kind of budget are we talking about?
And work with the budget. Go ahead, sir.
Guys, I just wanna let you all know that we already have a fleet of crews that will be in Baltimore County as of June twenty-seventh. It will be on a hundred percent of their, of the buses before September. And we already have here to buy all of this and including gateways to install your full fleet of buses at September as well.
This says that we don't wait till June, we gotta start working with the contractors now.
Yeah, and we...
And we can't sell it, they do.
Mr. Jean, lead time, two weeks, three weeks?
Pardon?
Lead time, two to three weeks?
Two to three weeks for what, for installation?
Lead time, yeah, so if we vote on it at our next meeting, June third, and we say yes, you could piggyback on the Baltimore crew.
Yeah, I will have installers there that we, that June twenty-second on your monthly monthly.
Okay.
As you said, Margaret Allen met with the bus contractors on the four LLCs this past Monday.
There's no reason why they turned us down.
Yep.
Are they up for it?
Most of them, yeah. I mean, you got a couple of different things, but yes.
That's okay.
How much trouble is it to move it from, like, when one of our buses go out of service? You know, we got twelve, fourteen, whatever year the date is, and you're getting ready to come here, and we've given them a PVA, and is that much trouble to move it from one bus to another?
No, we, we, so every year, we have required buses, bring them up to do, you can get them back or return to the Delta. And then new buses come in. There are two ways we do this. One is either by partnering with the dealer network. So we are actually negotiating to have our equipment required in bus buses, Uber buses, IP buses. But even if they aren't pre-wired, those service techs, the dealer will deliver your unit to you, hopefully installed so there's no impact to the operator.
Do we, do we have a, let's say something happens, a glitch in one of the buses, a camera or something, how quick can we get it back in service if we find out one goes down? How quick can you get it back up for us?
Well, the best way to answer that, I only get paid out of this, right? So if the equipment power, and if you take it, if the ticket's not, we're gonna be paid. So we actually connect everything to the cloud, and if we, the component, we're gonna fix it before you even know it's on. We have field techs that are locally available to you and your district. So we expect those repairs to happen within the day.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, somebody's backing their bus into the barn and knocks the camera off. How quick can we get it back on?
Again, it's a, it's a lot and connecting and doing it. So you also have safety talk. You have buses that are, are gonna be in a repair state. You're not using a hundred percent of your fleet, typically you'll have five or six percent and seven percent of vehicles. Or we would simply hook it up, outside the circuit, put another one of the camera on, and they're prepared now to begin with.
I guess, Sid, by issue the question, I'm just concerned, just only because you're breaking up a little bit over the internet. You know, we have an issue, I want, I don't want one bus to be, not have a camera on. I want them to all be working, if, you know, if it's a day, can you get it, we have ability to get it back online.
So one of the questions that we were talking about, so every day, every minute, every second, it's online, and they can tell if something's wrong with it. So somebody backs into a barn or whatever, knocks it off. One of the questions we asked was, hey, what is your availability in the area? So by having Montgomery County, PG County, you know, some large school systems, they're gonna have techs here in the area. We can also, to replace that, they can come here, if one's not available, we have spare buses, they can take one off of to put on there, you know. So I don't really see a problem with that, I mean, you might be a day or two or something like that. But that was one of the questions that we asked. And I believe, you know, in my heart, with watching the amount of cameras installed in other counties, we have that ability here too, so.
And there'll be no, no issue every bus.
So anyway, we'd like to move forward. I just wanted to give you a presentation, an overview tonight of what's going on. Of course, you know, Darren is looking at the finalized contract, you know, because I would like his approval on that also. So we will be coming to you next time to move forward with this. All right.
Okay, thank you, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, everyone, I appreciate the time. Enjoy your evening and please be safe.
Be safe, be healthy.
Thank you.
Uh-oh, who the heck is that?
Did you want to add anything to that, Mrs. Kavanovich? Did you wanna add anything to the presentation, or are you good? Okay, well, thank you for waiting so long with us, we appreciate it.
Good idea.
Thank you, Mr. Fister and Ms. Gay.
It's been a long process, but...
Yes, thank you so much. Mr. Fister, the Maryland Association of Counties OPEB Trust.
There you go.
I'll have to wait ten minutes.
Thank you for doing that, sir.
Thank you, President Harper, Dr. Kane, board members. Tonight, I'd like to present the Mako OPEB Trust Agreement for this board for adoption. Currently, Queen Anne County Public Schools participates in an OPEB Trust with the Queen Anne County Government, Kent County Commissioners, and the library. The county government is also in this Mako Trust, so they have their OPEB funds, which is other post-employment benefits, as we've talked numerous times with this board as to what that's for. So they, they basically are in two trusts, and they left a lot of their, or a portion of their funds in the current trust that we're in because the other three members, you know, were not moving forward at the time. However, they'd like to move forward now, where they move all of their assets into the Mako Trust, which then kind of forces us to, you know, do the same or look for other alternatives. So we will need to move its fund, which is our funds, which is slightly over five hundred thousand dollars, into a new trust. As the Mako Trust is substantially less costly to join compared to the MAB Trust that we looked at and researched, we would request the board adopt a resolution later tonight to allow us the opportunity to join. In a nutshell, the Mako Trust is providing a higher rate of return than the current, I'll use savings account at a local bank. I'll use savings account at a local bank. The Mako Trust also has an investment consultant, and the trust rate of, expected rate of return is around 7%. With a greater investment return, the less budget dollars are required to fund the nearly $225 million net OPEB liability that's sitting on our financial statements. The trust agreement has been approved by your legal counsel, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So what I didn't know was there was a, because we, I didn't see this on the website for our meeting tonight, there is a whole resolution side to it, so I don't know if any of the members would like to have the time to read the OPEB agreement. I mean, it's here for our review. You, okay, because it's, it's very daunting.
You said the lawyer reviewed it.
Yes, I've been in communication with Mr. Burns even recently while one or the other presentation was going on, and everything seems to be fine, you know, with his review of it. There is a, there's a resolution, I think Ms. Harper or a board member would need to read into the record, and then there's just one adopting resolution that would have to be signed. And then what that would go, that would appoint me basically as the trustee, as I am for the health insurance trust with ESMEC, as Mr. Pinder is with the energy trust for ESMEC. So we do have to have a representative, that would be me, an ex officio member, and that's what the resolution would do, would appoint me for that, and then I would act on behalf of the board as the trustee towards the Mako Trust. And then, once we have your approval, they'll go forward, they'll hopefully approve us to be joined, they'll have to have a meeting, join, all that, and then have this all in place by June 30th for our financial statements.
So just going, touching on Darren Burns, legal counsel, between the cost savings for the MAAB Trust, migration of other school systems, this vehicle, and the fact the county government favors QACPS doing this, it seems like the fiscally prudent move. I see no legal impediment to the proposal nominating John Fister as ex officio to serve as the authorized member representative and such and such, so that's board counsel.
And it meets all state and federal requirements.
Yes, and all the investments are in secured, you know, so there's no, not a, you know, lost, you know, risk to the principal, as we can only invest as a public entity in certain investments anyway, it follows those rules as well.
So that is an action item.
I understand that we don't really have a choice except to do this or go out on our own somewhere, and frankly, I don't think that we have the capacity to go out and digest all these finances, even with your help. So I would be inclined to do this, as you were recommending.
And that approval will come for you in the approval section of your.
Yes, we have an action item, thank you, sir. Okay, 4.01, we have the FY21 budget discussion. So it's cap, operating and capital tonight?
Sorry, I did, I left the title slide capital in there, so we're only going to deal with the operating budget, because I, it was an error.
Because I do have a capital question, but.
Okay, we can answer it if we know it, but the presentation I put together, yeah, there was the slide deck from the last time, and I omitted, forgot to omit the capital budget.
Okay.
Dr. Kane, any intro, or invite me to?
Go for it.
Okay.
Drum roll.
We'll keep rolling. So I just want to give you an update on the requested budget, discuss other budget balancing options, you know, some of those we've discussed before, and then kind of for the first time, give you some unknowns and considerations that are going to impact our, our budget balancing for FY21, which I understand, first week of June, the county commissioner will adopt their budget, and then we'll of course know the exact dollar amount, and then we'll have some work to do by June 30th as required by law. We have to have our budget balanced and approved. So just a recap of what you saw just a few weeks ago, you know, our revenue currently is $103.3 million FY20. We reduced our increase down to only $2.3 million, so our new requested budget based on information that we have from the county and our best information from the state would be $105,659,593. So an increase again of about $2.3 million in new revenue. This does take into account using $200,000 of our existing fund balance to help bridge that gap as well. Again, just a simple picture of our revenue, most of this would come from the county at 57.8, state at 34.6. We get very little from federal, which is all really restricted anyway, a little bit of fund balance, and then some other accounts there as well. To take the 25 slides that we've seen before and condense it down into one, our learning accountability and results, and again, this mimics that worksheet that we've worked with many times over the last couple of months. We, we've reduced our initial request from $1.5 million down to $330,000. There was nothing in safety, security in the operating budget that remained zero, as we're handling that with a lot of capital and a lot of grant funds to maintain the safety and security of our buildings. Operational effectiveness, originally had three positions, now we're down to one, cost of $685,000 down to $337,000. Our human capital, and this is where your negotiated items are, the original request was $3.37 million, it's now down to $1.645. That is less than the compensation because the request that we proposed to you as one of the budget balancing scenarios, sorry from stuttering, was the reduction of positions, which we'll talk about here shortly, and that's how the human capital piece is reduced down to $1.645. Communities partnerships and engagement, that was the workforce coordinator that was actually requested by the county council that we include in our budget, that has been reduced. So again, to match our revenue estimates of $2.3 million, this is how we would meet that in those particular areas, and you've seen all the detail behind all these in prior presentations. So again, this is where we would look to spend our dollars under the revised, 62.9 would be in salaries and benefits would be 22.7. So again, as we've talked about ad nauseam, we're a people business, you know, 85.6% of our budget we spend in salaries and benefits. If we're going to make large changes to that, that's the area that we're going to have to, have to deal with, because some of our contracts, as you talked about bus contracts, you know, that's, we have to transport our kids, we have to pay the electric bill, we have those kinds of fixed costs. We have to provide the benefits, we have to provide tuition reimbursement, negotiated agreements, so all of those things make up those small little pieces of the pie of about just under 15% is what some of the more flexible stuff. But even within that, we have some very fixed costs as well. So again, just a recapitulation of our fund balance, the far right column where the white block says 1131.7, that's our unassigned fund balance, the rest of the fund balance is accounted for. So we do have the ability to use a little over a million dollars of that fund balance for what I would consider one-time items. It should not be an ongoing or sustaining revenue source. Fund balance in total is very low compared to GFOA recommendations, but it's, it's the hand that's dealt us, and this is the little bit that we have left over that we can handle things, such as, you know, the pandemic that we're dealing with. We may have to tap into that going forward just to mitigate some of the unknowns that we have going forward. So some of the balancing options that we've talked about already, if we were to do a furlough day, it would save us about $280,000 in salary, that would be, you know, one day for all employee groups. The position reductions that I mentioned earlier, the 27 positions at $72,000 would net us about a $1.9 million reduction to our budget. Now, again, that doesn't necessarily mean that we would have 27 people, this would be 27 FTEs. We would look to reassign some of those positions into other vacant positions that may come up, or other positions that they're either certified or suited to perform. Doesn't necessarily mean we would be eliminating jobs, we would be eliminating positions. We certainly could read.
But those are teachers' positions.
At that rate, yes. So if we were to do other than teachers, you know, just as a simple little placeholder, just to kind of give you an idea of what we're looking at, if we had, looking at other positions that were less costly, then obviously the number might have to go up a little bit as far as the FTEs would be concerned. But that's just an average ballpark. We could certainly renegotiate our settle agreements, what those amounts, who knows, depends on what, what the options are and whether the board decides to go down that road. But if we did, our salaries, eliminating all step increases, would save about $1.5 million, and eliminating all of the colas for all groups would be about $950,000. Also, the renegotiating, you could perhaps look at healthcare to change the cost-sharing percentage. I don't believe that's been done in quite a few years, but again, depending on the percentage would depend on the dollars. We could certainly use additional fund balance. As I mentioned, we do have $200,000 in this budget balancing scenario, we have 1.1 available, so we could certainly use a little bit more.
The only thing I, once you start doing that, if you use it for a reoccurring cost, you've either got to pull it out next year or keep going down there until you have zero dollars.
And you would have to fund it as, as when we did.
That's what happened to us last year.
Yes, as you saw in the first budget presentation that we did, the, it was a reduction of $234,000 to our revenue because we used 234.
As a one-time cost.
As a one-time cost.
But so.
But it was a, but it was a, a way to balance the budget and bridge that gap for that last little bit.
Right, one year. But it could, it could follow us the rest of our time.
It, it could, and as long as we end the year with a positive balance, that funds itself, but it's not the proper way to continue, fund balance should not be used as an ongoing revenue source, you're exactly right, Mr. Smith.
I will quote Mr. Wilson from last night's county council, county commissioner meeting, making this year's budget better by making the next budget worse is not a good idea. Fair and flat out, so I don't recommend it either.
That's right.
Your furlough day, how's that impact your Kerwin dollars?
So I have a request into Maryland State Department of Education for that exact question and concern. It was almost, I even phrased it, I'm almost afraid to ask, but I had to ask, they have not gotten back to me, as, you know, they're dealing with a lot of things as well, and their staffing and everything, so I expect an acknowledgement, either yea or nay. I would personally think that it would impact that, the Kerwin dollars, because it is three dollars that are being spent in that particular group, and that was the intent of those Kerwin dollars, but I just want to make sure, you know, so that's why I reached out to MSD to get that clarification. Good question, thank you. The stimulus funds, we've talked about those through the CARES Act, we've taken that off the list as something to use to the balance budget. Again, as Mr. Smith said, you know, it's one-time funds, and we should be looking to use those funds for something to enhance our recovery and our continuing perhaps distance education needs going forward for one-time costs, and not use those as sustainable costs and use it to balance the budget. So that we actually took off from your last presentation where you saw that as a possibility. But other unknowns and considerations, and again, all of these things are going to have to be determined because we honestly just don't know where we are. So as far as COVID-19, you know, what kind of cleaning supplies or personal protective equipment or any sanitizing equipment are we going to be looking at that we're going to need to purchase? Could we use CARES dollars? Again, just to reset that, we're looking in the neighborhood of $675,000 to $715,000 is Queen Anne's County's portion of the CARES fund. We do not have currently any access to the county funds, FEMA, the very little dollars might come through there. FEMA's rules are if relief is provided by some other federal agency or through other stimulus package, they will not duplicate that, obviously, that would be double dipping. So there's very limited access there. State Department still has a little bit of money, but I don't believe Dr. Salmon has decided how that money is going to be issued out to the counties. And then the last little bit of money that's out there, and they call it the gear funds, and the G stands for governor, he has control over some of those funds, and he could allocate those out to school systems, but we don't have any information on what those dollars or any plan, and again, speaking with MSD on some of these issues, they're in the dark as well, because that information just has not come out yet. Continuing on with some unknowns, distance learning, we need to purchase additional devices or a different device, the Wi-Fi access, the training and support for not only the people using it, but the teachers and things like that, you know, that's a cost that we have to concern. Learning management system, you know, again, to help develop that distance learning initiative, I believe Dr. Kane and Mr. Peluski can speak more about that, but again, it's a system to kind of harness all of this distance learning and make it, the management of it much more efficient than what we're currently doing.
Can you describe that?
Yeah, so that is a platform that would house our distance learning, it would help us with those, some of those metrics that Mr. Anderson is talking about, so it would tell us, we could pull reports to see student engagement, so we wouldn't have to go to different sources to get information. It could contain students' assignments in there, and we could do the grading in there. So all, it's all of that matched in, into one system.
We, we don't currently have that kind of software.
We do not have a learning management system like that, no. We're one of, I think, two or three districts in the state that does not have.
Two.
And, you know, we, we do submit for a learning management system annually, but it does always get cut because there's an expense with it, but using CARES dollars, we were hoping that we could get started with it. So that's why it is here, we don't have a learning management system.
Continuing on with transportation, again, just some unknown costs and just some thoughts, these are just planting some seeds. Will we need additional buses because of our limited ability to transport, you know, the students that we currently have? Additional buses means additional drivers, additional buses means additional operational costs. So those are just some, again, some unknowns and some considerations as we go forward in balancing the budget. Bus modifications, are we talking about Plexiglas and anything else to insulate or in between, you know, rows or from the driver from the students? I mean, these are just unknowns at this point. Continuing on, maintenance and operations, barriers and shields, whether it's food service, secretarial office, you know, desks, things like that. Postage and envelopes, you know, we've spent $18,000 in postage, you know, just since March 13th in mailing out packets to homes. Certainly, that's above what we would normally spend in that arena. So that's, again, a consideration that we're going to have to look at, just the envelopes to mail them, you know. We've ordered 15,000 envelopes to mail out these packets, will that have to continue? Cafeteria and food services, like with the delivery of meals, and I'm not necessarily talking about to pickup locations or fire halls, but we might be talking about carts that are actually running down the hallways as we have to deliver, perhaps deliver meals for kids to eat in their classroom. So there's a whole lot of things that we don't know, additional equipment to, for coolers and things like that, based on what we would need to do. And again, cafeteria tables, you know, we do have some money in the capital budget for cafeteria tables, but we may need more based on some distance learning, I mean, distance, social distancing initiatives that might have to be put in place. And then the unknown of the unknowns, we just don't know just yet where some of this money is going to need to be spent. So I just kind of wanted to plant some seeds as to, that was it, plant some seeds as to some of those considerations as we go forward, because we don't have very much details, and we got 100 and some days left before we open school where some of these things are going to have to be answered. Any questions?
Like I said, I have two on the, on the capital side because I, I, I'm sorry, anybody have anything about operating? I mean, pretty much gone over this.
I think we got some major decisions to make, and sooner the better, because I think some could be catastrophic to some people. I'm not a fan of losing any employees because I think we're getting, you know, with this, I don't want to raise class sizes, you know, this is not the time to raise class sizes. If we lay off teachers, that's going to be, that could be an issue. We have some tough decisions, and when, when do we, I mean, when do you need to know some of the, I mean, you need to know it yesterday, the county's pretty much been clear to us on what revenue we're getting, I don't know if we should start meeting next Wednesday or every Wednesday from now on, or what.
We, that's certainly your prerogative, obviously, we do need to make some decisions, we need to go forward, and, you know, we are working, you know, as an executive team on scenarios, we presented us a few of those to you, we have some other ideas.
So we basically have given multiple scenarios, some sources of where we could make some reductions, but we really need guidance from the board, so we need to know what direction to go. So at this point, we pretty much exhausted the options that we, that we have. If you have others, then, you know, let us know, but we just, we need some guidance from you. When the board, when the commissioners approve the budgets, we have to be ready to come back through and balance our budget.
Yes.
So.
By June 30th.
Right, that's going to happen in June, so.
I mean, I'm not for taking anything away from whatever people have as of today, you know, I don't want to make anybody go backwards, but if we're going, I don't know, and I know we got the Kerwin issue, but I think we're going to have to take some serious look at salary increases, because I am not an opponent of not fulfilling and having the proper staff in this, in this system. That's my opinion.
Well, not to cause a panic, but what about moving the ninth grade back to Kent Island High School? I mean, what would that look like, and would there be cost savings in that? Can we house the students back there again? Can we, can we integrate the teachers that are there into that system? I mean, I'm not, I mean, I know that we like having the ninth grade there, that's why we built that building, however.
Wasn't why we built, we didn't build.
Well, we built it for a lot of reasons, but anyway.
So we did look at that, and that would save a few positions, we're not going to get anywhere close to 1.9 million for that move, but we did look at that as well.
But it would, it would save on busing, it would save on, I mean, we wouldn't be having the overlap of student, I'm, I'm just, I'm not a proponent, I'm just.
There would be some savings, but as Dr. Kane alluded, I mean, we're looking at a $2 million hole, and with 86% of our budget in salaries and benefits, it's either negotiated salary increases or.
You need to make some really hard decisions.
Or some positions.
Well, the positions, you're, the 27 FTE.
Well, the positions, you're, the 27 FTE, you said you would be shifting people around like we've done in the past.
So, right, so what we did in the past is we, we needed to reduce eight positions, and we were able to transition the people that were in those eight positions to new positions that we would have had to fill in the beginning of the school year, based on people's certification. Eight is different from 27, and you know, we generally hire about 40 people in the beginning of every, on average, 40, 41, 42, something like that, in the beginning of every school year. So we know that there will be some positions. We've already hired for some. So for example, you know, if you got a math teacher, you know, a candidate for a math teacher, and you have a math opening and they qualify, you need to snag that person right away because you're not going to get that again. So certain positions, obviously, we've hired for, you've approved, that will be effective in the beginning of the year. Will we have 27 more on top of what we already had? It is possible, it's possible. Will they have the exact certifications that we need?
Right, that's the question.
That is an issue.
A comment.
In the, in the same places where we need them.
So how many, are you looking at that would be?
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
I'm just want to know, this same question, what, how many are positions are you thinking we'd have to stop, we'd have to cut? Out of 27, I mean, obviously, you have a good idea which ones you can move.
It, I don't, I don't.
Other than that?
No, I don't. We use 27 because we know the dollar amount we need to get to, and we've averaged the salaries, and that's how we got 27, because we know the dollar amount we need to get to. I do not know which positions they will be. In our meeting with principals, we had them to start thinking about what we would need to do at each school. But you know, we don't have 27 schools, obviously, so it's not like we could say one per school, that's not going to be it. It really is going to need to be on a case-by-case basis. We'd be looking at content area, we'd be looking at how many other teachers on that content area, that grade level in that school, so that we can look at class sizes. So do I want to have 30 kids in a fifth grade class? No, I don't. So if that's not the place we need to take it, then we need to look in another area. We need to look at tenure, you know, of teachers. There are a lot of things to be considered, and our likelihood of being able to refill a position, they're pretty much all, you know, in, in high-needs areas, because everybody is a shortage. Every position pretty much right now in a school district is a teacher shortage. So we really have to take it on a case-by-case basis.
What about this idea? We were thinking about moving equal to equal. But what about taking a higher qualified person and offering them the opportunity to be in a lower qualified position but keeping their pay the same? The difference would be, it wouldn't be the large amount, but somebody will have a job, and the difference would be between what the job was paying versus having to maintain the salary of the person who took a lower position.
I'm not sure what you mean when you say a lower position. A certification is a certification.
Certification. No, no.
If I'm certified to be a social studies teacher, I'm certified to be a social studies teacher.
Okay, so you only get certified to be a certain teacher?
You have certifications in certain areas, yes. So I might be an elementary teacher, I could teach from one to six.
Well, what about, and if a person is certified to do a middle school teacher, and we want to take that person and lay somebody off that's in a, or one of the people that are destined to leave, I'm just looking for money.
We, we, we know how to do all of that, and we, and we do that.
I just want to make sure.
So it's not a matter of a higher or lower certification, it is what is your certification, what is our need? And if we have to make a reduction, is what's the impact of that reduction?
That's the point that I'm trying to get straight. Just because somebody has a certification to be an A, and we have vacancies in a, in a C, what's the problem with taking the person that's certified as an A and putting them in a C and just leaving their salary? The difference that we save is what the vacancy is paying versus the additional money that we put in there. We do it all the time in industry.
Again, it's about, yes, but certifications are different.
If you're, and if you're talking about the same person, they're going to make their same salary wherever we put them.
Exactly. But if they're in a job that was to be filled by somebody that was paid less, we make, we save the difference.
He means take that, that person that's making this much, put them down into something they would not go into, but with their certification.
Who's going to do that?
And then to omit that bill, omit that position.
Somebody that wants to keep their job would be more than happy to.
But it, that's not how it works with certification. If I'm certified, I'll use anything. In biology, I can teach biology, it doesn't matter which school, whatever, that's the salary.
That's not the example you made. You said if I'm certified for elementary school, and I said, well, suppose somebody is reduced out of middle school?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's.
It doesn't matter. If, if I, if I teach in middle school and I'm certified to teach in elementary school, and I need to use that person in elementary, they're going to make the same salary, because it has to do with their tenure.
Because there's a vacancy.
Yeah, they will, yeah, they will.
See, the savings is in the vacancy you remove them from.
Which is the 27 positions we've been talking about.
Right, so I'm still going to have to fill that vacancy where they left, right?
And please keep in mind.
Unless I'm reducing it and just getting rid of it.
Don't fill it there.
Well, we can't reduce it because we, our student population is still staying the same.
It depends. That's why we say we have to take it on a case-by-case basis.
And we know that already.
And, and we build in over $330,000 in salary savings into the base budget already, knowing that we will have teachers retiring at a higher salary with newer teachers coming in. That's already factored into these numbers and has been for years.
And the point that was raised earlier is if we, our base salary drops, then we, it threatens the current.
It does, it does, we have to be careful.
Deal.
Yes.
So we're caught between the devil and the deep blue sea.
Yeah. Dr. Kane, if you are looking for thoughts and guidance, I'm, I do not want to drop any people, okay?
That's not going to happen.
And you're doing the, to get the 1.9, I would not. I would look at all other alternatives.
So that's, that's the decision, you know, that the board, we are, we are at a place where, you know, we're going to have to start making some decisions so that when June comes.
That's my thought on it. That's my thought on it. So if we make up different scenarios, I wouldn't make one up that doesn't drop people, in my opinion.
Well, what's tying our hands is the Kerwin.
And we, and we did. So remember, we had the compensation one in there. So we had compensation, that's in there. We have the reduction in positions, that's in there. So you have that.
Oh, wait, so you're not going to lay out, here's what comes up to 1.9, and here's what comes, you know, you're not going to do that like we have in the past?
We did.
I didn't, I didn't see it.
As far as people, people being gone?
You said you were going to have scenarios like we did last time, we had about.
And we presented a couple already.
Yeah.
And the one scenario that we've presented would be the reduction of 27 positions to make up 1.9. Honestly, I don't know where, other than, other than going in negotiations or cutting those salaries, those positions, not people, those positions, where we would find 1.9, almost $2 million in the base operating budget. It's just not there. Keep in mind, we ended last year with $72,000. Now you're asking to take that budget down by 2 million more. With 86% of our, you know, in staffing and dollars, that's where we have to look. You know, the $5,000 here, yes, it all might add up to $100,000, but that's a small chunk of 2 million. That's where we've got to look.
What I mean, we need to, I'd like to look at the healthcare system, what that costs.
So look, look at the screen right now, balancing options, right? So that's what you're, that's what you're talking about.
Have we found that yet?
So you wanted one in there that had something that wasn't cutting positions, so we said renegotiate settled agreements, and we gave you the dollar amount there. We put furlough day, gave you a dollar amount there. You have the 27 positions. So we, we've given, and this is, we've done it before, but we wanted to lay it out again so that you know. So you've gotten options.
We have to go, in my opinion, we go in and renegotiate. That's all we had the choice of, is what you're telling.
I disagree. I don't think you do that.
Well, I, I want to know, are we dead set, I mean, have we gotten the number on the healthcare? I mean.
Yeah, six, I've estimated it as $647,000.
No, 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 we haven't gotten a firm number from them yet.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
That's the 647,000. It's a six and a half percent increase, the same thing that the county government's.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear.
Yes, ma'am. Mm-hmm. And we're dealing with unfunded mandates, basically. We're dealing with $100,000 with the minimum wage.
Always.
Mm-hmm.
Dr. Kane, I think the big final discussion after we dance for a couple hours is going to be people, it's going to be salaries, or, or we don't fill certain positions. My que, and I'm, I'm not for shorting the staff and put, and not having enough staff in, in place. If we do find a position, I'm not saying they're not needed, but it's not essential. I'd like that scenario. I don't want to sit there and go from six elementary school teachers down to five, and, and have classrooms go from 22 to 28. That, that, just general.
That's, that is, that is absolutely a scenario. So I hear you, I hear you, I, everybody has an opinion and you're supposed to. But the bottom line is, like you say, after the last dance, a decision is going to have to be made.
I understand.
You just asked for our opinions.
That's right. That's right.
And I understand, there's, I think, you know, we can save, and I think Tammy's got a point, you know, 50 here, 100 here, but we're looking at a major number, and the only places, where the money is, is people. And it's either, how much we've negotiated is raised, do we just say, okay, Kerwin, we're taking a chance, which is a damn good chance, we're going to lose that $548,000 from Kerwin, and we're not going to be able to match under these circumstances what we do, because we feel it's more important to keep our staff up than it is to sit there and, and have wages. And that's just something, you know, I think probably I'm all for meeting next Wednesday if we need to, because, you know, it's, I don't want it to get down to June 29th and making a last-minute decision that's not, which we all feel consensus, not all going to agree, I can guarantee you, that we all can sit there and make the best consensus with everybody's input to come up with the best case scenario.
That we have to find to balance is what?
Basically, 1.99 million dollars, the equivalent of the 20, not 1944, the equivalent of those 27 positions. If you don't want to do any of those 27 position reductions, then we've got to find 1.944 somewhere else in the base budget because we've, or there are a couple additions, but.
Any decision at all, you reduce the positions.
You fire people.
For the future.
You're firing people.
You don't fire them, you lay them off to get unemployment. That's how business works.
You fire them, and, and so there are, there's a whole slew, they're all getting raises because, and we're firing people so they can all get raises.
Not all those positions.
I don't go with that.
They have people in them. Some of them are open positions that are being eliminated, is that right?
Well, no, not necessarily that are being eliminated, that will be vacant, so if people retire, we wouldn't refill it with a new person, a new hire, we would put somebody in a position as long as they were qualified with a certification for that, to fill that reduction, that, that vacancy, and reduce the position they came out of.
I think as each board member, we've got to come up with what's best for our students and our, our system. Do we have, do we sit there and reduce staff, which I hear from you, or we sit there and say we are not capable of giving a step plus a percent and a half and all this? And that's, it's going to be a tough decision, but it's something that is going to boil down to a, I find, an easy decision at some point, because there's a decision you have to make, and it's going to be right on the table.
I'd like to hear what their furlough day thing is going to be about, whether they're going to allow us to have the furlough day and still get the Kerwin. I mean, that's unfortunate. It's unfortunate all the way around how, how, you know, this is.
But even that, even, even that, and if it did not affect Kerwin, you know, you're going to be limited in the number of days there, because to meet that, you're, if that was the only thing, you're looking at six days?
That's all in service days.
That's all in service days.
Because you started at school 180.
Yeah.
Do you, I mean, do you guys, I mean, you remember 2009, 2010, how terrible that was? How many times, how many people, Sid, 2009, 2010, how many did we furlough, how many times? It was awful.
Two days furloughed.
Now, what we did is we didn't give them a step, and we heard about it for years.
Four?
And.
It was four days.
Yeah. The county laid off 100 people.
Really?
Sometimes.
Okay, we have too many conversations.
It calls for that. That is the appropriate way to deal with this.
Mr. Smith.
Oh, hang on. I got it. What are you looking for? I think Mr. Smith wants to.
Okay, I, yeah, I have written all mine.
I'm telling you that the people that are left will be happy they have a job. The people that aren't are, they're unhappy, but they at least get something.
And then, of course, the, the others.
Decide to do something else, then I don't think we have enough information.
It is sustainability, because, and the county commissioners talked about this last night, I, I watched the meeting, and, you know, they have positions, like three positions that are open, but they're only talking about one person. When you take away people out of a service, you deplete the service and the quality of that service and the sustainability of the system. What are we going to do for our students? How are we, how are we helping them by, by taking people out? How are they going to learn? How are we going to have support staff?
Theoretically, that's true.
It's, it is true, not theoretically, it's reality.
Theoretically, actually, we will know.
You lose, you lose the value in what you are offering because you cannot offer it properly.
And then the other thing too, is if you, if you go in negotiated agreements, then you're, you've got to consider the competitiveness going forward, again, the sustainability, the competitiveness about recruiting and retention.
And, and honestly, you lose trust. If you have to go back on your word of what you've negotiated, you lose trust.
But when we negotiate, we negotiate in good faith, assuming we're going to be fully funded and funded to the level that we need to meet our budget.
True.
We are not this year. And so, I mean, when we negotiate, and I understand Mark's position, why do we negotiate in, start in November, pass all this stuff, agree to something, when we don't know we have the money? This year, we're not going to have enough money.
There's a bigger part of this, Kerwin and five, a half a million dollars sitting on the sideline. If we don't raise the salaries by 3% of the gross total, then $500,000 has got to be taken away from the people that are left. I don't think doing that makes any future sense, because they're the senior people that are left. Sure, 27 people, some of them are vacancies, and they're low-level people.
The support that helps keep the system going.
Well, then we're going to have to find a way to make it go without them.
Well, it might not, it might not be a 5-0 vote.
It's what happens.
I've been there.
I've been there too, many times. And you try to work to get the other people back. Anyway, I think we've talked ourselves to death on this. I'm not absolutely against cutting...
Yes, ma'am.
So, when are we giving ourselves time to discuss this? When the county commissioners are going to give us?
June 9th, is it?
June 9th or 6th?
Yes, and it's at the end of that first week. You know, I think that we pretty much know what the outcome is going to be. So, I don't think that we, you know, have to hang our hats on that date because we've been told what the outcome is going to be. We just need to prepare for how we're going to balance our budget.
Do we have anything else on that you would know of the agenda for June 3rd at this point?
Um, you know, any adjustments, we don't, we always will have a COVID update, but other than that, the budget is the big thing, you know, so...
So, I would suggest that we spend the better part of that day and try not to put anything else on that agenda if we can.
We may have some contracts that we need to push forward. You might have your RFP for, you will have your RFP for the legal services. So, there are a couple of business items that way, but in terms of big presentations and that, we'll have the Edmonton contract, but that's another business item. So, those are the kind of things that we have, we don't have any other big presentation.
I would suggest the next two weeks, if anyone has anything that they would like to look at, email Dr. Kane and Mr. Pfister so that we can look at what we can do in the next two weeks. I mean, time is critical right now.
And, you know, it's a tough decision, but we do have to think about the scope of the amount that we're looking at. And we're not going to find $2 million, nitpicking 3,000 and 4,000 and 6,000, that's not going to do it.
But I, I was hoping maybe you could come up with a general idea of these 27 positions and what the art of the possible is for what kinds of positions you might be dropping since some people think we could...
And whether they're all filled, and isn't really 27?
Well, I mean, I just get a general idea.
We gave, we gave the average of 27, you know, and again, if it's going to be, you know, teacher position, the average is 72,000. If it turns out that it's going to be a, a support position, it may be lower than that. But it really, honestly, does have to do with school by school, looking at the factors that I mentioned to you. Now, what we, what we want to make sure that we are not doing is alarming our staff, our employees, by saying, oh, we're going to look at all 5th grade teachers, or we're going to look at, because that's not the way it ever works out. It really is a school by school, case by case situation. And the bottom line is, that doesn't need to be ironed out here at this time. What needs to be ironed out is the dollar amount that we need and the number of positions possibly on average, or the compensation, and that we already have.
So, basically, you're saying we have no other guidance, we just have to talk about which way we go on those two things?
Again, unless you have some other idea that's going to get us to the scope of $2 million.
And we do need to go back into the budget too. There are some things that can come out of the budget.
Okay, we can certainly discuss that.
Without just talking about just staff, there's some things that can, can be removed, can be reduced. Because I see where you've put in things here and there, and I see you looking at me sideways, Sid Pender. There's some things that can be...
Keep in mind, there are...
There's some things that can be reduced that, you know, will help, I mean, again, if it's 15 here, 20 there, whatever, I, I really don't like getting rid of people.
Keep in mind, there are some, there's, there's some, you know, a teacher too, you know, we do have the nurse, nurse health service, and the health services coordinator that was pushed upon us, you know, that's in your budget, we can't cut that, that's a...
We can't cut that.
Right, but what I'm saying is, and what we're showing here, you know, there is, there is a position, you know, moving from the Title I grant, I mean, Title II grant into the local fund that we could look at, that's...
We did.
Yeah, so, so we've, we've made some reductions, there could be a little bit of stuff, but the, again, the, the thing that's the unknown is here.
Yes.
You know, we can do the 1.9...
Like the substitutes, I brought this up before, you'd put $100,000 in the substitutes, that can come out.
That, that, that 100 is for the, last year with substitutes, this year, that 100 is for the minimum wage increase that's going to go up again.
We have, we use minimum wage and substitutes and home hospital teachers.
Yeah, I got that. But we're looking at, if we're looking at virtual learning again, that's all mute point. So, just bringing it up.
Thought about furniture?
Yeah, there's a bunch of stuff, I mean, I know it's nickel and diming, but we have to nickel and dime this thing to death because we're down to, what did I say, pennies? So, we need to go into that and look at that too.
Or we're not into the bone, we're down into the marrow.
We might want to think about freezing, you know, freezing salaries, we talked about that.
We talked about freezing salaries, you know, well, we talked that with Mrs. Bass at HR. Yes, so, all these, all these ideas we need to bring forward this, in the next week.
So, by our next meeting, are we going to have a clearer picture of positions that may not be refilled?
No, we, we don't, I mean, we don't know what we need until somebody gives us a resignation because we don't have, like, teacher positions that are, are not filled, you know?
We don't have any pooled positions.
We don't have, yeah, we don't have a pool of positions.
Why did we see a, a whole list of people that are retiring?
Because we have, that's why I said, we won't know until we get a resignation, and to this point...
How are we going to put down as a resignation?
Because those are the ones that we do know. But for the other positions, we don't...
They've been counted as, uh...
Right, yep.
Reduced some higher number to 27.
Right. No, if I, if, no, no.
Because you're going to replace them.
Yes. Correct. So, those are, what you've seen are existing positions that have some significance, and so, we have rehired for those positions. What we need to talk about moving forward is the other 27 positions that we would need to...
The amount of difference between the younger person coming in and the retiree going out is salary dilation, but that doesn't get us anywhere close to 1.9.
And, no, it doesn't, and Mr. Pfister...
And it also is counterproductive in having a payroll at a certain level beyond this one. See, I don't think people understand that we're going to throw away $500,000. We're looking for, you know, 10,000 here, 4,000 there, yet if that payroll doesn't stay the way it is amongst the teachers, we lose $525,000 for sure. The way these things work, and I've been it for years, the core of your organization remains intact and gets a raise. The people that are at the bottom, new people and so forth, it's expected that if there's a tight time, that's who goes. And that's the way it has to work. But if you decide that it, it has to work where a promised wage is not going to be given to the people who are remaining, you're asking for trouble. There'll be disgruntledness all through the organization.
Yes.
Maybe they're not too cooperative when it comes to new ideas, I don't know.
Well, nobody likes to have the idea that they're losing a job.
We, we know what we have to discuss next meeting.
Okay.
We've got a lot of scenarios, I think it's time to move on. Let's, we'll come up with some, we'll come up with some interesting things later.
So, just to touch on, because there was capital decided on by the county commissioners, the kitchen equipment, the new kitchen equipment that was asked for, I think it was like, what, 155,000, Mr. Pender?
157,000.
157,000, and we need that kitchen equipment. I mean, we have ovens, we have refrigerators that are old and they're not going to last. What is our operate, what is our capital looking like? I mean, and they, I know they're doing the line item veto and all that on stuff.
They reduced our capital by about $430,000.
Okay.
The three main items that came out were food service replacement equipment, then furniture replacement, which is what they're doing with cafeteria tables, and then also phone replacement.
Is safety, can we put that a part of the safety grant? Can we ask for that?
We can look at that if the funding comes available for that part, that part we could try.
And couldn't we try through the CARES Act? I mean, we need that, we need telephone systems.
Phone system would not.
Is not, okay, thank you. I'm just grasping at straws here.
I don't even think the phones are going through safety. I mean, Mr. Pender, look it up, but I don't think that's going to work.
And, I know, but that's a safety issue.
Which phone system replacement is that?
They're looking at, um, trigger kind of.
Oh, okay. Kate, another point I had, are we going to be giving Chromebooks to pre-K and K students with this virtual learning going on? Are we even considering that?
We have a group that's looking at whether or not we should have devices in the hands of pre-K, K, pre-K through 2, and it may be Chromebook, it may be tablet, and it may be nothing at all. Because right now, the group has decided that they did not want to put those tablets in the hands of our youngest learners for a variety of reasons, but we did ask them to go back and to look at that, to investigate that.
Can I recommend that they, and I, and I understand that there's an increased cost in having touchscreens, but pre-K and K, I mean, they need touchscreens.
Which is why we said, maybe not a Chromebook, but a tablet.
A tablet, rather, okay.
But they're, they're looking at...
Yeah, I'm sure they need it at all.
I, and...
There's two schools of thoughts on that, on thought on that, right?
They're passing out papers, and I don't think the parents want that responsibility.
Also, it's the hand manipulation. You have to look at, they have to learn how to draw, they have to learn how to write.
First mer, fine modal tactile skills.
Exactly, rather than hitting on a, on a tablet.
That a number of our students would prefer to have the written material, and they have Chromebooks as well. Why don't we give them the written material, take the Chromebooks back, and then redistribute them to children in the lower grades that can make good use of them?
Well, pre-K and K, I would not be giving them the Chromebooks, again, they, it just, the, the, but a tablet that has, you know, the capability of touchscreen would be lovely. However, I'm of the old school, I, I want to see them with the, you know, the manipulation of, of, you know, crayons and...
I guess my question is, what, what is not being done that requires us to have a tablet to it in the pre-K?
Pre-K to K, okay, that was my, I didn't know if we, it was in... I didn't know if it was in...
First and second grade.
The, the budget request that we had given to, that Joshua put together to go for...
It's not part of his technology.
It's not a part of the technology, okay, then that answers...
In three years.
That answers my question there, okay, thank you. Anyone else on budget, please tell me now. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pfister.
Current action items at 9:30. 5.01 HR report.
Madam Chair, can I make a suggestion and maybe an amendment? That I, we had discussion, lengthy discussion in personnel and stuff. Contracts I'd like to vote on this evening. The balance of our discussion, I'd like to make sure we have adequate time to finish up at our next meeting for discussion. So, in other words, the whole HR report will not be voted on, only the four hires. Rather than voting on the whole thing. I mean, we, we were here till 10 after 5, and we really, or, I'm sorry, 10 after 6.
6.
Because we were still in discussion, and I would feel more, myself, and I'm only 1 of 5, would feel more comfortable if we could have further discussion on that between this board.
On the particular, particular subject that we were in discussion about.
We're in discussion about, and I think it's mainly the five board members.
But Benny wants to approve the four hires though.
Well, I think the four hires, Mrs. Bass has put out and submitted it, and I don't think to hold them up for another week or two would be appropriate. If everybody's on my same page.
So, the, the motion would be to...
And resignations.
To approve, as a part of the HR report, the resignations and the...
Contracts.
And the contracts.
Teacher contracts.
With further discussion of a particular issue.
And especially between the five board members.
As discussed in...
I mean, Dr. Kane too, but we understand.
So, okay, I have to write this motion down.
And I would suggest that our next meeting, if we need to, make it even earlier so we have time, if it's going to be lengthy, which it could be.
Sorry, I have long hand, sorry.
Take your time.
So, the motion to accept the resignations in four hires with the exception of the issue discussed on the human resource report as discussed in closed session.
And I'd like to make a caveat that we get that on our jet, executive session, I'm sorry, closed session.
Okay, let's deal with the motion first. I have a motion.
Second. Oh, I can't second, I made...
You made the motion, second. Any questions or comments on the motion, other than a caveat? Because it will have to be brought up at the June 3rd meeting. Okay, no discussion. I call for the motion to accept the resignations in four hires with the exception of the issue that was discussed on the HR report as discussed in closed session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And resignations, did you have in resignations?
Resignations and for hire. All opposed, say no. Eyes have it, the motion is carried, thank you very much. The Ken Allen High School PA replacement. Mr. Pender?
Good evening again, board members.
Nice to see you, sir.
Yes, I'm seeking approval tonight for the PA replacement at Ken Allen High School. That system was installed back in 1998, and there's quite a few rooms that do not receive the announcements or...
Hold on one second, let me make the motion and then we can go ahead and go into discussion, I apologize. I'm a little, little dizzy.
Sure.
All right, so I need a motion to accept the PA replacement at the Ken Allen High School, approval of the contract with HP Electronics for the fiscal amount of $87,520.06. Budget source is FY 2020 Aging Schools Program Funds for $54,014 and FY 2020 Security Upgrades of $33,506.06. So, I have a motion.
So, move.
I have a second. Questions or comments, Mr. Pfister?
Which budget is coming out?
Mr. Pender, sorry.
Who do you insult worse?
The last time you were here, you gave us an opportunity to get $440,000 a year in income. Now you want to spend it all.
Yes, he does, $87,000 of it.
This, the majority of this, the $54,000 will be coming out of the FY 20 Aging School Fund. So, any school that's over 12 years of age qualifies for the Maryland State Construction Program, and they allot you a certain percentage of money.
This money is coming from some fund someplace.
Yes.
Yes.
That's already booked somewhere else.
Are you sure this was, this fund was passed, it wasn't vetoed by the...
Oh, no, no, yeah, this is, uh, this is Aging School, yeah, this, this is already done, yes.
The net worth to the capital fund is what?
For the FY 20 Capital Fund is $33,000.
And this is partly a safety issue?
Yeah, that's why we're taking part of it out of security upgrades.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought I heard.
And we have it in the, we have it in the budget, the 2020 budget for $33,506. Okay, so, any other questions, comments? So, I call for the vote on the motion to, for the PA replacement at Ken Allen High School, approval contract of HP Electronics, fiscal dollar amount $87,520.06. Budget source FY 2020 Aging School Program Funds for $54,014 and from the FY 2020 Security Upgrades of $33,506.06. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion is carried, thank you, sir. Mr., yeah, you guys are interchangeable tonight. Uh, are we at exact path? Okay. 5.03 Edmonton, Ed, Edmundum?
Edmundum.
Edmundum, okay. Do I have a motion to exec, to accept? Except, exact path at Edmundum? Munn, however you say this. Exact path for a 14-month program, fiscal dollar amount $99,702.40. Budget source is the CARES Fund. Do I have a motion?
So, move.
I have a second. I have a motion, a second, any questions, comments? Mr. Paluski?
No, ma'am, Madam President, just Superintendent would like to recommend, based upon the presentation the board has, has been presented earlier in the session.
Any questions or comments?
I think we had, we saw the presentation earlier and it affects all our students, so I, I think it's a good idea.
And as I understand, it's sole, sole source on the ability to go all the way to K-12.
Yeah.
We also have existing relationship with Edmundum.
Edmundum, it's approved by MSD.
Approved by MSD, yes, ma'am.
Okay, nothing further? I call for the vote on the motion to accept exact path by Edmundum. I'm saying this right? Uh, for the fiscal dollar amount of $99,702.40. Budget source CARES Fund, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, the ayes have it, the motion is carried, thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Pfister, the OPEB, do I have a motion to accept the Maryland Association of Counties OPEB Trust Adoption for the fiscal dollar amount of $500 from the FY 2020 Operating Budget? Have a motion.
So, move.
I have a second. Questions or comments on the motion, Mr. Pfister?
Thank you, President Harper. As we discussed earlier this evening, this is moving our funds out of our local investment trust with the county government, county commissioners, and the Queen Anne's County Library, moving it into the MAKO Trust, Maryland Association of Counties Trust, that the Queen Anne's County Government is already a member of and has significant investments there. I ask that we adopt the resolution that our assets be moved there as well.
Any discussion?
It's $500,000, right?
No, the initial cost, sir, is $500.
We have $500,000 in the trust, but from a budget, what this is going to cost us to move is only $500, which is why we're going with it as opposed to $40,000 with MAE.
Correct. And the 7% interest.
And 7% interest.
You need to get on, I need to open up my own agency for this, right?
I'll get you the contact information.
Okay, so, I am calling for the motion, a vote on the motion to accept the Maryland Association of Counties OPEB Trust Adoption for the fiscal amount of $500 from the FY 2020 Operating Budget. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, the ayes have it, the motion is carried, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Pardon me while I finish this. Pardon me while I finish this. 5.05 Board Meeting Schedule. We need to... For the 2020, 2021 School Board Meeting Schedule, we need to get this ahead of time soon. Mrs. Wright knows when to have us in this building. I have made, made a recommendation that we need to move the January 27th meeting to the 20th because it is the third week of the month. And that is our normally scheduled meeting.
So, January 27th, you want to move to 1/20?
To the 20th. We did that, we did that this past year as well. And as I...
I have one thing to change on that too is, um, it would think it was March 3rd, we have board approving the budget and for two years now, we've slid that and I wonder if we should...
No, actually, that's not approving the budget in March, that's the presentation. March 3rd should be the superintendent gives the budget.
And you take, and you take the vote, you take your vote on that day, after I approve, I mean, after I present, you take your vote?
No, you just, that's the date that superintendent presents the budget, March 3rd.
Yeah.
That's when you, that's when you present it.
Uh huh. And you all generally approve at that, at that meeting.
Oh, you are very correct.
All I'm saying is we always see we slide that to the end of March as opposed to being the 3rd of March, this year we slid it to the end.
I thought we did the very first...
We kept it, I think we kept it this year. But we, the year before we did, we slid it, but I believe that we kept it this time.
Yeah, this year we did it, the first meeting of March, we did it on that day, you are very correct, because by the March 18th meeting, we were all talking about COVID.
And, and when it gets, that's a good schedule, and if it gets closer, it can be, it can be changed and moved if we have to.
Well, Superintendent, budget, right, okay. And I, and I, we can leave February 24th on there because I believe we had taken it out this year. We leave it as tentative, just in case we have to have another discussion. Are we in?
I can wait and see what you said.
What did I say? 7th and 21st. 4th and 18th.
So February the 24th is out?
Or, or you, you were talking about January 27th was out.
Yes.
And January 20th is in.
Yeah, January 20th, because that is the third week.
And yeah, and I believe you must have said that before, so yeah.
Right, let me check on February.
Yeah, I was going to say, did you need to do something different for February?
17th, no, the 17th is on here and that has to be a session because that's the 3rd Wednesday.
And, and we'll be, we'll be needing that for budget.
Yes, we will.
Those meetings in February.
Yes. I don't know why February 10th says executive closed session.
And I don't know, am I looking at?
That should be a tentative.
So, we have February 3rd, as this is what you were talking, we have February 3rd as the budget presentation.
But we need to step that back to March.
Yeah, that is not, that's not right, it's in March.
So March, we'll leave it for March the 3rd, or put it for March the 3rd. Okay, good.
And you generally take your vote on that same day.
Correct, because we've had two months to work on it, okay. So the presentation and the vote will be on March 3rd. We can leave March, February 10th as a tentative work session? I don't know why this says executive closed, but we can leave it as a tentative work session.
Which day was that?
February 10th. February 17th has to happen.
Just leave February 10th as a work session.
Yes. All the other dates, everyone else okay with all the rest of the dates? 2nd. You can have it, ma'am, I have one. Okay. Good. Do we need to make a, we don't have to make a vote on this, we're just approving it?
It's an action item.
It sure is. Okay, do I have a motion to accept the 2021 School Board Meeting Schedule as proposed?
So moved.
Yes, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have motion, a second, any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, I call for the vote on the motion to accept the 2021 School Board Meeting Schedule. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The ayes have it, the motion is carried, thank you. Future meetings at 9:45.
And as you take a look at your calendar for future meetings, President Harper, just a reminder for the public that May 25th is a school day for Queen Anne's County, so that is a regular school day, students and employees a work day.
Okay. Did you see the email on that? Okay, thank you. So our next meeting, the county commissioners have another public hearing on May 26th, I assume that's by virtual. June 30th is our School Board Meeting. June 4th, the county commissioners have a work session and then June 9th, they are adopting their budget. We again have a School Board Work Session set for June 17th, I assume that's when we are going to be finalizing our, and our budget in order to have it done by June 30th. Is that, is that clear with everybody? God bless you.
But depending on some changes, I think the 3rd, we'd have to give some really serious direction of what we're doing.
Yes, absolutely. I mean, we have, we have a good idea of what's going to happen, so we're just going to have to firm it up. And any other discussion about meetings, are we good? And, okay, so 7.01 Public Comment. I had, I had, I've had several emails this week. As a part of the graduation, we all know the graduation, it's going to be happening, the high schools principals sent out the memo on Monday. 10 days in June, they're going to be taking care of the students individually, it's, I'm so happy this is happening, thank goodness. One question I had from a student. He wants to request to have a certain teacher come and see him walk and get his pictures.
No, teachers will not be in the building, we do still have to follow the limit for the number of people in, in the buildings and we certainly wouldn't want to be partial to one student and teacher.
Can I ask this?
Multiple how that requests.
If that student makes that teacher a part of his four or five, however many people they're allowing, can that happen?
That's just really opening the door to a real ser- serious issue.
I'm trying to make everybody happy.
And, and, and I understand that, but the direction has been from the State Department and from me, that teachers are not in the buildings at this point. We have given principals some flexibility with which leaders, you know, leadership team teachers can help to do the learning packets, but we have to hold a pretty firm line on that because there will be multiple issues of, you know, you let that one do it, you can't, that's going to create an issue. So we'll follow the state superintendent's directive and mine and that is not a time for teachers to be in the building.
Okay.
Suppose...
I was just, uh, just...
Rules change on June the 1st.
If the rules change on June the 1st, then we can open it up.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that, that's a sensible way to do it.
Yep, we're always going to follow the rules.
Right, well, as I understand it, the principals have it all worked out, they come in one door, they drop off their books, drop off Chromebooks, pick up their, their cords, they, they walk to the music, they go to the podium, they get pictures, they're, they're holding the little diploma jacket. Uh, I think it's lovely, I'm so happy this is happening, and then they go exit a separate door, so they're in one door, out another door, maintaining social distancing, X number amount of people allowed in the room. I was just trying to have a compromise if they made it a part of their entourage, their peeps. But I understand your point.
Yeah.
Because if one, one teacher shows up and doesn't show up for another student, I mean, it's going to cause, you know, problems down the road.
My understanding would be if a teacher has a senior, it's a parent or something.
That would be different.
If it's a relation.
Oh, yeah, they're a parent.
What you're saying is, is it's a teacher as a position, but if it's a family member or whatever relation it is, then that's their prerogative as far as that.
If I'm an English teacher and my niece is going through and I'm allowed to go see my niece, I mean...
Absolutely.
That would be different.
If you're one of the family members, they're one of the family members.
Basically, I understand.
Can we get a copy of the principal's letters?
I did send that to you. You did, I'm happy to send it again.
I did, yeah.
Okay.
What role do board members play in this? Again, we have a room occupancy problem.
Yeah, normally board members would be, every board member would be there and you would rotate helping to hand out the, the covers, you know, for the diploma, but since we have this limitation right now, board members will not be there.
I offered our services, but when I got told it was over a 10-day period and we had to be there from 8:00 to 6:00, I said, um, see you. So, no.
It is...
Thanks for doing it.
It is one of the best things we do.
And I think it's more important to have, to have the students bring their family members than us sit up there.
Plus, again, the principals have to have X number of people there helping to direct traffic, we don't need to be in the way. So. Mr. Straight, are you good with me? Okay, I had promised 20 students that, since I did not read their letters on the, on the May 2nd meeting, that I would read them tonight. And I am going to take this time now as part of public comment to do so. Are we good? Can we go with it? Okay. Thank you all very much, I'm going to read these through, I need at least three board members to stay in the room with me so we can finalize the meeting. I know this is probably going to take about a good 40 minutes for me to read everything, maybe not that long. Okay? All right?
Dear Board of Education, my past four years at Ken Allen High School have been nothing short of a traditional high school experience that I believe every kid deserves to experience growing up. I am currently a senior and have been involved in a variety of sports and extracurricular activities over the course of high school. I have played soccer, lacrosse, basketball for Ken Allen High School and every one of these sports has meant the world to me. Building friendships while competing on the sports fields have been the highlights of high school career and to have these seasons, lifetime experiences stripped for me is unjustifiable. Not only have I held great pride on my sports teams, but furthermore in the classroom. I have been involved in National Honor Society for two out of my four years at Ken Allen High School and supporting local events in my community was an opportunity for me to expand in the real world and explore new careers. When hearing that the coronavirus outbreak was going to be more severe than most people thought, I immediately became concerned. I thought, what if? What if they canceled another one of my lacrosse seasons at Ken Allen High School? Rather, what if the rest of the world of this semester, what if the rest of the semester was canceled? On May 6th, 2020, I found out that my senior year at Ken Allen High School would no longer continue. I realized that may be hard to relate to the fact that I have not gotten to experience events such as graduation, prom, sports, spring sports seasons and creating everlasting memories with friends, family and friends in my last year at high school. But is that, that is the circumstance. I realized the other day when I had to pick up my cap and gown, capping gown at the high school, it would be my last time seeing all of the high school officials. I thanked them for all they did for both my fellow classmates and myself during my time at Ken Allen High School and had to say goodbye to both them and the school without a handshake nor a diploma. It wasn't a proper ending to a four-year relationship filled with memories and emotion left inside of that school and not the ending I would have guessed. This memory will continue to haunt me for the rest of my life, knowing that I did not get to partake in the same events, traditions that many relatives prior were able to experience. I hope you cherish every second that you had in high school because not everyone gets that opportunity to. Sincerely, James Consoli. Dear QACPS Board of Education, Dr. Kane, Mr. Trent Gospis, who dot? My name is Anna Deng and I am part of the class of 2020 seniors at Ken Allen High School. In the past, I have been lucky to participate in the KIHS volleyball program where I have spent majority of my sport interest. My teams, teammates and I would spend long hours practicing and voting our time to being successful in both athletics and academics. Also, I have focused my studies in the PLT W biomedical pathway, which has taught me a tremendous amount that regard college procedures and rules. This semester, I was expecting to finish the last class of the pathway, but due to the pandemic, the majority of my studies in this class have been cut short. All of my K through 12 schooling has begun on Ken Allen, from Ken Allen Elementary School up to Ken Allen High School. Most of my friends are part of the Student Government Executive Board and National Honor Society. Personally, I have been there to witness how hard they have worked towards our academics and creating various events that are all available to students, that are available to all students and families at KIHS. I understand that though, through this difficult time, it is challenging to withhold promises that were given to us as a class, but respectfully, I strongly urge you to reconsider the decision to hold a virtual commencement ceremony. Please consider to look at the solutions that our KIHS class president and BOE representative Skylar Pedraza has presented, which includes a postponement, postponed graduation that would take place on a later date that accommodate the restrictions made by the state government. To many of us at KIHS, to walk across the stage was something that we all look forward to when ending our high school careers. I have been so blessed to take on these last 12 years with my best friends, from attending football games to high school dances to plays and many more. Again, please reconsider the solutions that my fellow classmates and I have presented to you. Please grant us in return the graduation ceremony that the class of 2020 deserves. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Anna Deng. To whom it concerns, as a fellow senior of the class of 2020, I'm writing this letter hoping it will help change your decision for our graduation ceremony. All of us seniors have been waiting for the day we could walk across the stage to receive our diploma in front of all our family and friends and now your decision has taken that away. Now we are forced to watch a video of just our pictures and pictures of our peers and think that we are only as important as just a picture on a video instead of walking the stage like we have been waiting and fighting for the last 12, excuse me, last 13 years of our education career. I myself had, have had a tough senior year with being in and out of the hospital with surgery after surgery, but I still fought so I was able to go to school when possible while also keeping honorable all year long with straight A's because in the end, I knew it would be worth, all worth it when I got to wear my capping gown while crossing the stage with my family and friends watching and cheering me on. I asked that you postpone the graduation ceremony till later this summer to give us that chance of walking across the stage and feeling like all the hard work and late studying nights, nights were worth it and that we were all deserve that right. I hope that you will find in your hearts that making the decision to give us the right graduation will be the right one, even with postponing it in the summer, because postponing a graduation we have been waiting for is worth more than not getting one or worse, getting one that will only be a picture on a video. I feel that myself and my classmates are being punished rather than rewarded for our hard work and effort. Please reconsider your decision about graduation. Give us what we deserve and show us you all are good people that care and who we can trust. Sincerely, Jessica McDade.
Dear Dr. Kane, I'm writing to you today to ask that you reconsider your decision to hold graduation virtually. I believe that this decision was reached too soon and that an effort should be made to explore the other options of a graduation. Numerous members of this amazing community have already expressed that they can put on graduation that both properly follows social distancing guidelines and honors the seniors in a satisfactory way. This community is trying to do its part in the partnership found in your mission statement. However, they have only been ignored this far. It is known that QACPS is a high performing school system and it was able to maintain this title through the hard work that was put forth by both the Board of Education and the community. I am asking that once more you partner with the community to try to put on a more meaningful graduation for the students who have worked diligently, diligently over the last 12 years. One of the QACPS core values is valuing faculty, staff and students. To contradict this statement and the years of hard work and dedication put forth by the class of 2020, it was decided that we would only be recognized by a quick picture on a screen. This leaves me as well as my peers to question how our school system values us. The work we have put forth in school and at home is being brushed aside without consideration of a better alternative. Since the outbreak of the COVID-19 began, we have been asked to continue our work and to continue putting forth our strongest effort to further our education. We have been following this request over the past few months because we, as a class of 2020, have not given up on our education. We have been following this request over the past few months because we, as a class of 2020, have not given up on our education. We ask that now you do not give up on us. Sincerely, Connor Wingate.
Dear Dr. Kane and the BOE, I am a senior at Ken Allen High School and I along with many of my fellow classmates, if not all, are disappointed by the decision of graduation being virtual. We've been working for 12 years toward the moment when our parents and friends would see us walk across the stage. Many things have already been taken from us due to COVID-19. We have lost out on time and memories with our friends that we will never get back. This past week, we received our caps and gowns that we paid to wear for this ceremony and that was supposed to be our last memory as a class of 2020 and now won't get to attend. We have gone to school for 12 long years, learning all the information we needed to, stressing over tests and quizzes, trying our very best to pass so we can make it to that stage. As a class, we want that last memory of our high school career before we go our separate ways. We understand the circumstances we are in, but we ask that you reconsider all options, even postponing graduation before sticking with the option of virtual. Many schools across the nation have come up with other options and ways to celebrate their seniors, like using drive in theaters, postponing until July, or even separating the chairs like the Air Force Academy did. There are many options out there that can be considered, and I believe the same opportunities should be considered for us, for us. After so much was taken when this year was supposed to be the best year of our lives before we went out into the real world, we just want proper recognition for all our hard work. Please don't give up on us. The year 2020 is a year that history is being made. Please help us get the ending we deserve and ending worthy of making history, not easy anticlimactic options that shuffle us aside. Lindsey Bordonk, Bordonk, Ken Allen High School.
To the Queen Anne's County Board of Education, my name is Jaclyn Tona and I'm a senior at Ken Allen High School. I've been in the public school system for 14 years, including pre-K and kindergarten. Graduation is something everyone looks forward to and we work very hard to get there. For all my four years at Ken Allen High School, I have been I have made honor roll, balancing schoolwork activities, and for the last two years, two years, working part time to maintain this status. We are taught to be responsible, work hard, compassionate to others, and strive to be all around best person we can be. I and my fellow classmates have done this. However, now I feel personally that the BOE does not want to recognize our achievements for the past years. All we ask is to be able to walk the stage in our cap and gowns and have our family members present. We understand a large graduation ceremony may not be possible, but please do not take this one simple request away from us. Our class has already given up so many end of the year celebrations for seniors. Please let us graduate. Jaclyn Tona, Senior Class 2020, Ken Allen High School. Excuse me.
Dear Dr. Kane, first I'd like to say this. I am very disappointed and angry at your decision regarding our graduation. I and many other 2020 graduates had our expectations set. Now I am well aware that this pandemic was unforeseen and unpreventable. However, other counties seem to have great ideas for a safe and acceptable graduation. Slideshows are for school projects, not graduations. We believe that you have taken the easy way out. I'd like you to think about your graduation and your last day of school. You and your class have the ability to give a final farewell to your peers, teachers, and administrators. The class of 2020 was completely robbed of our senior year, year, proms, sports, awards, graduation. The least we could be given is a pleasurable but safe graduation. By this, I mean walking the stage. Also, for some, this is the only form of graduation they will get. Those who will not be attending college or military won't know the feeling of graduation. In 2016, I attended my cousin's graduation at KIHS. I remember how happy and excited she was to move on and get her life started. I vividly remember the tears of joy and sadness she felt saying goodbye to her peers and teachers. I always thought that the one day I'd be able, I'd be up on that stage feeling the same exact emotions she did. I have been a student in the QACPS system since pre-K, 14 years. I am very proud to say that I have made many friends throughout my years in the same county. Not being able to say goodbye is very heartbreaking. Since the beginning of middle school, I have been looking forward to a graduation ceremony. I feel that all my hard work and dedication is not being recognized in the way I deserve. Please take into consideration our feelings and rights to a memorable graduation ceremony. This world has taken a serious beating with this pandemic and has affected us all greatly. The least our school board can do is raise our spirits by formally celebrating the class of 2020 in a safe, socially distant, abiding way. Sincerely, Carly Nielsen.
Dear Dr. Kane and the Queen Anne County Board of Education, my name is Hannah Price and I am a senior at Ken Allen High School. I would just like to start off by saying for the past two years, I have been driven back and forth from my home in Stevensville to QACHS every day so that I could attain my CNA slash GNA. I have received honor roll every semester of high school and I'm a member of the National Technical Honor Society. Maintaining a good job, good grades, and good attendance while going to two schools at once was not easy. But no matter how hard school got, I always said to myself, just do it so you will be able to graduate or this will all be worth it when you are walking across that stage. Everything I have done for school has was powered by the dream of having a graduation and you have now made that dream unobtainable. All my hard work was completely, has completely been thrown out of the window because of your decision. My classmates and I never took the easy way out and we have held up our side of the deal by completing our schoolwork and getting our credits to make sure we were able to graduate. The Dr. Kane and the BOE, on the other hand, immediately took the easy way out when planning our new graduation and has crushed so many spirits in the Queen Anne's County by doing so. You have shown us that you couldn't care less about what we want. You are the people that are supposed to fight for the students in your county, but instead you showed us that the wrong people were voted into your positions. You have disappointed so many people and caused so many tears. With that being said, I hope you will always remember how you ruined the class of 2020 senior year because trust me, we will always remember who was a part of the BOE's graduation decision when voting comes around.
Dear Dr. Kane, the Board of Education, my name is Samantha Bowman and I am a senior at Ken Allen High School. When I got the email from my principal and it said the commencement ceremony would be a virtual graduation, I was shocked and heartbroken. I figured something like this would have have happened, given the certain circumstances going in the world right now, but I I expected better. There are more options than just virtual graduation. For example, we could still have a ceremony later in the summer if the stay at home order was lifted and just following the social distancing guidelines. The military graduates are doing just that. Why can't we? There are so many different ways that we could have a ceremony if we could just, we just have to be creative. We could do a drive through graduation where students can decorate their cars and have their caps and gowns on and receive their diplomas. We, the students, have held up our end of the mission statement and core values of QACPS and we, the students, ask the same be respectfully extended to us. We have already lost the reminder of our senior year along with the events such as our senior prom, award ceremonies, senior spirit week, and for me personally, my finer final choral choir performance. We have already lost so much. Please don't take this away from us. The commencement ceremony is very important important to us students and we just ask that you consider, please consider other options before resorting to a virtual graduation. Respectfully, Samantha Bowman.
To whom it concerns, as a fellow senior of the class of 2020, I am writing this letter hoping it will help change your decision for a graduation ceremony. All of us seniors have been waiting for the day we could walk across the stage to receive our diploma in front of all of our family and friends, but now your decision has taken that away. Now we are forced to watch a video of just our pictures and pictures of our peers and think that we are only as important as just a picture on a video instead of walking the stage like we have been waiting and fighting for the last 13 years of our educational career. I myself have had a tough senior year with being in and out of the hospital after I fought so hard and was able to do so when possible while also keeping honor roll all year long with straight A's because in the end I knew it would be worth, worth it when I got to wear my cap and gown while crossing the stage with my family and friends watching and cheering me on. We ask that you postpone the graduation ceremony till later this summer to give us the chance of walking across the stage and feeling that the hard work and late night studying were worth it. Did I already read this lady? I believe I did. I apologize.
Hello all, my name is Tavion Gross, a senior at Queen Anne's County High School. This school year has been the most spectacular year I've ever had. From the varsity basketball team success at my success at school, everything has been great. Due to this pandemic, I totally understand why our graduation would be postponed but not canceled. I and many other students have given our school system the very best we could for the last 12 years. So it would be only fair if you guys gave us the one day we had been preparing for, which is our high school graduation day. Graduation isn't only I graduated from the from high school. It's more like I graduated from high school. I did it off to college type of day. For kids leaving high school, this day is the most important day in our lives. It means we've done everything we have set out to do so far. Without graduation, it all seems pointless. I know there are far more better options than having a virtual ceremony. I don't deserve that. The class of 2020 doesn't deserve that. And our parents who have waited for this special day do not deserve this as well. Please take the time to really think about the graduating class, how the graduating class feels, and please reconsider canceling graduation. Thank you, Tavion Gross, Class of 2020, QACHS.
So you're telling us that we can use our class funds to have a reunion in five years, but we can't use that money to move our graduation. I know I'm not the only senior upset about this decision. If it was last year's seniors, Ms. Hudok would have done everything in her power to make sure her daughter could walk the stage. I have been told countless times graduation is right around the corner. You're telling us that it is okay to give up on life accomplishments. It's okay to give up on big milestones. You have all stripped a lot of freedoms from the class of 2020 and this is outrageous. You say it will make us stronger, but in reality, it's giving us more validation to give up on our hopes and dreams. I understand the pandemic is not your fault, but you have all the power to make sure we get what we have been working for the past 12 plus years. Administration has never been the best at QACHS, but you all just showed us you really do not care about the students. You will try to say I'm wrong, but I'm not the only one that feels this way. You have truly shown the community that you are all a failure in the inspiration of the inspiration of youth. You should all be ashamed for having stripped us of the decision to move our graduation. I know that more than half the senior class at QACHS and KIHS would rather graduate in three months than never have that opportunity. Thank you for stripping us all of our big of our big finally and confirming. It is perfectly fine to give up on our dreams.
Mrs. Moore, especially after all the times I've been on the brink of suicide because of how awful QACHS is and you all have just approved to me how terrible it is, how much you do not care about our opinions, just what is most convenient for you. I'm sorry, I'm not going to say this young lady's name.
Dr. Kane and the Queen Anne's County Board of Education, it is disappointing that the in-person graduation commencement ceremonies for the class of 2020 have been canceled. The BOE has resorted to a virtual commencement on May 28, which is quite frankly, a slideshow that could be made in one day with minimal effort. It is not an appropriate way of honoring the class of 2020 seniors at Ken Allen High School and Queen Anne's County High School. I'm proposing the idea of postponing the in-person graduation commencement ceremonies for the class of 2020 for a later date in the summer and that the virtual graduations scheduled are not just a slideshow. As seniors, we have worked for 12 years for our graduation. I cannot express in words how upsetting this whole situation has been. We have missed out on so many senior events that we have looked looking forward to for so long and is ultimately inconceivable that our in-person graduation commencements have been canceled already. The QACPS mission statement believes in the excellence of possessing skills and knowledge throughout life with partnership and community. There's no doubt that we could come together as a community to put together an in-person graduation ceremony later on in the summer. The parents of class of 2020 and local businesses will be willing to help out, contribute, and provide donations for a possible in-person graduation commencement ceremony at a later date in June or July. There were once graduates themselves and understand how important the milestone of graduating high school is. For some students, this will be the only academic graduation commencement of their lifetime if they decide to go straight into workforce, military, or take other life paths. It does not make sense why this decision had to be made so early. Governor Governor Larry Hogan has mandated the closing of schools only through May 15. Yes, this is still the subject to change and we know an update will be provided soon, but canceling our in-person graduation so soon is a poor reflection on QACPS. It truly makes us seniors seniors feel that our administration does not care about us that much. And the BOE QACPS approved operating capital budget states that this year's annual commencement expenses are $28,934 among the two high schools and that includes the high school graduations, ceremonies, diplomas, security, rental equipment, and supplies. At this point, the only expenses for the BOE includes the ordering of diplomas and possibly rental expense repayment payments in advance. In addition, the leftover funds will be reallocated and never used on the class of 2020, which is unjust. We worked hard for 12 years and those funds still should go towards an appropriate graduation commencement for the class of 2020 at a later date. The SGA president, officers, and delegates at Ken Allen High School have already taken the initiative of rescheduling our prom. It's disappointing that this is not, this has not become a reality for our graduation as well. It's especially disappointing because of the BOE's mission statement that mission that states they strive for innovation and community unity. Other school districts in Maryland such as Hartford have looked at the possibility of holding an in-person graduation ceremony in June. Furthermore, Washington County is still actively looking for a solution to honor the class of 2020 with proper recognition as well and are waiting for the first week of June to make a decision. This is in hopes of holding an in-person graduation ceremony or a modified one where graduates are the only ones in the gym and it's live streamed. Howard County, which includes 12 high schools and Baltimore County, which includes 25 high schools, are planning on holding a graduation ceremony at a later later date if possible as well. And Rundle County still hasn't canceled their graduations yet either. I commend their effort in trying to make the best out of difficult situations and waiting to make a decision in the best interest of the class of 2020. We have only two high schools in our community, so it's extremely disappointing that QACPS hasn't taken the initiative to schedule an in-person graduation ceremony in the future as well. As we all know, social distancing is a state executive order, but that doesn't mean that with proper safety measures with us, that us seniors can't walk across the stage even with a virtual graduation. Scheduled times in increments of five minutes or less could be scheduled throughout the school day or families could come in with their proper PPE and seniors and could be recorded while walking across the stage for the virtual graduation scheduled for May 28. Grocery stores and essential businesses are still open and people are still out in the public associating with way more than five to 10 people at a time. There would only be five to 10 people in the school gymnasiums at the time when recording of seniors walking the stage for the virtual commencement. It's just as much interaction as we had with picking up our graduation gowns, captain gowns last week. I've seen other schools writing all the names of seniors on their school wall, honoring the class of 2020 with their football field lights on for 20 minutes every Friday night and drive-throughs of teachers, administration, and local fire departments waving goodbye to seniors, ensuring they receive a proper goodbye. Caroline County has made signs for all their seniors and plan on putting them on the side of their highway for their community to see. QACPS has not taken the initiative to do anything for the seniors in our county, which has been disheartening. We seniors have been looking forward to our graduation with such a long time, for such a long time, and a virtual slideshow commencement is not the proper closure for this chapter of our lives. We've worked hard for 12 years and deserve the chance or the attempt to give us the opportunity to walk across the stage to celebrate this achievement with our classmates, teachers, friends, and family. Please reconsider the plans for the virtual commencement and postpone postpone our in-person graduation commencement ceremony for the class of 2020 for a later date in June or July rather than canceling it altogether. Graduation is the last chance for QACPS to show they really care about us. Morgan Flegel, Class KIHS 2020 Senior. Graduation is more than just walking across the stage to get a piece of paper. We seniors have worked 12 years for this moment, have worked hard 12 years for this moment. By taking that away, it's like we did nothing. Everyone talks about walking across the stage, getting our diploma, and throwing our caps in the air. The fact that we may not even get to experience that breaks my heart. I went to pick up my capping gown this past Thursday just to hold, just to be told the next day I was having a prerecorded virtual graduation. I understand there is a lot going on in the world right now, but it will soon hopefully slow down. So many schools in our surrounding counties have figured out ways around this. I'm hoping we can too. Canceling our senior graduation and prom is not ideal. Rescheduling it until it is safe enough to do so would mean the world. We have already been out of school for six weeks as of now and we didn't know our last day there would be the, that our last day would be the last day of high school ever. We didn't get to say goodbye to our friends, our favorite teachers, our guidance counselors, or anything. A lot of our seniors were involved in sports. They didn't know that they would never play for our school again. Their sports were taken away, prom season, et cetera. We are going through so much pain right now. We need something to look forward to. Please keep in mind
Please keep in mind the impact of graduation and prom will be to us. Postponing these events, these events will mean so much. I personally don't care if it's June or July, but just being able to have a traditional graduation would be amazing. Having a senior prom and graduation is what senior year is all about. I hope by sending you this, you will reconsider rescheduling these important events in our lives. Again, thank you. Alex Unger, Class of 2020, QACHS Senior.
Dear Dr. Kane, President Harper, members of the board, as a 2020 senior, my heart broke last week over the news of graduation, partially because I would not get the same experience, classes, to have the same experience classes before me had, but mainly because I and many others feel this is the easy way out. Over the past four years, I have formed close relationship with the administration at KIHS and never once questioned how, questioned how much they care for me and my peers until last week. During these unprecedented and difficult times, there has been a lot of good around our county. It seems as though during these times, we are shown how much we truly care for one another. We are to have, we are demonstrating how far we will go to show one we care from birthday parades to sitting outside one's homes just to have a conversation through a window. Across the country, schools and their districts, districts are getting creative with their end-of-the-year activities for their seniors. In Flagler County, Florida, graduates will drive across the finish line at Daytona to receive their diploma. And I can't say this word, is a school system in Louisiana, took a stage to every graduating senior's home. In Wiley, 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 Texas, the principal of Wiley High School visited the homes of all 612 seniors. He traveled over 800 miles just to show his students how much he cares. On April 18th, the United States Air Force Academy held an in-person graduation with only the graduates and distinguished speakers. The graduates remained six feet apart. Our vice president and chair of COVID-19 Task Force, Mike Pence, was in attendance. Furthermore, across the country, schools are simply postponing their in-person graduations until Jan, until July. I am respectfully asking that the QAC Board of Education considers options for potentially holding a postponed in-person graduation. Thirteen years ago, when the class of 2020 began kindergarten, our parents all expected that one day we would walk across the stage to receive our diplomas. Four years ago, when the class of 2020 began high school, we were excited to start the best four years of our life and look forward to the best year of all, senior year. For three years, we watched senior classes experience the joy of their final months of high school. You can imagine the excitement build up on our part. Eight months ago, we started our final year of primary and secondary education. I understand no one could have predicted this pandemic, and many difficult decisions have had to be made, but high school graduation for some is the only graduation they get. I can see how this event may be overlooked by some because many will have a college graduation of some sort, but what about those going into the workforce? For some families, this graduation will be the first for their family or immigrant, immigrant families. This is their first step in their child's advancement in the US society. The past 13 years, we have learned valuable lessons, including standing up for what we believe in. Our community has held up our end of the Queen Anne's County Public School mission statement and core values. In return, we are asking that the same be respectfully extended to us. I am asking that before resorting to a virtual graduation that would then be videotaped with graduates walking across their respective stages, we consider one of the many ideas the schools have come up around the coun, country, like simply postponing graduation till July. Kylie Marsden, Kenneland High School, Senior. Excuse me, sorry.
To Dr. Kane, the staff, and representatives at the BOE, many are fighting to have a proper graduation ceremony. We as seniors are disappointed and agitated as we want to have the same experience as previous classes before us. We understand your top priority is keeping the students of Queen Anne's County safe, which many do agree, do agree with. However, we feel there are alternative solutions to this temporary problem. I feel like there are so many opportunities and experiences we as seniors have missed out on. We don't have this sense of accomplishment because half of our year was taken away by the virus. Our educational and social growth was diminished behind a computer screen, not being able to properly interact with our teachers and other students as well as participating in our activities throughout our school life. We have reached out, we have reached our full potential within our obstacles and have persevered through hardships. We have strived to continuing growing up until our final days as high schoolers. That being said, graduation is an important milestone in one's life. It gives us a sense of accomplishment and that our learning and work hard and hard work has paid off. For all of that to now come down to a PowerPoint and our staff prerecording their speeches, it seems like we've all worked hard for nothing, and it doesn't give us that feeling of pride and pride and proudness, but rather emptiness and disappointment. Completing high school with a proper graduation would not only give us a proper send-off, but lift a sense of hope and confidence in being able to finally move on to the stages, next stages of our lives. This is why, as a suggestion, rather than having an entire graduating class together as it would probably be more problematic with current boundaries set, we as a community should not only postpone our graduation until the summer, but also split our graduation to three or four groups based on last names, like how our system for organization usually is run in large events. Now, as it wouldn't be our entire graduating class, I feel as though even if it is a small group, it would still feel like a proper graduation. In contrast to graduating alone in our homes through a screen, we would still enforce rules by staying six feet apart, and what, but when graduating, it would feel a bit more normal through all the chaos that has been circulating these past few months. We have given, we have, we have given, given all our efforts to have this good senior year. So as our final send-off, we ask that you consider all of your options presented before you, so that you may evaluate all of your options before concluding that virtual, virtual graduation is the only viable way to have the class of 2020 celebrate. Thank you for your time. McKenna Love, KIHS Senior.
Board of Education, I am asking along with my fellow classmates that you would postpone or and reschedule our onstage graduation, not cancel it altogether. For the first half of my education, along with my siblings, I was homeschooled. My older sister was homeschooled through high school, but I made the choice to attend public school to pursue sports and more social activities. Because of this, she did not have a physical graduation, and my parents were looking forward to having the ability to watch one of their children walk the stage receiving a diploma. Being able to physically, physically walk a stage is something that means a lot to me and my family. High school graduation is such an important ceremony because of the symbolic nature it holds. To most, it represents four years of hard work paying off, setting them up to go to college. To others, it is a celebration of the end of their schooling, which is equally as important and celebration-worthy. As a collective unit, the students involved in the class of 2020 have strived to become who they are and where they are now, and that is something that deserves to be displayed on something more than a PowerPoint. Every single student in class of 2020 would walk the stage in a manner different than the one that came before them. This is, that is something that cannot be replicated when your four years of hard work is merely celebrated as slide number 37. Please take my, as well as all the letters from my classmates, into consideration for the postponement of the class of 2020's graduation. Thank you, Josh Blevins.
Dear QACPS Board of Education, Dr. Kane, Mr. Schreckengost, Mrs. Hudok. Oh, read that one. Thank you. May 6th, Dr., Dear QACPS Board of Education, my name is Raymond Anderson. I am a graduating senior at Kenneland High School. I am also a four-year varsity player and two-year team captain, as well as an honor roll student. I'm speaking on behalf of the majority of spring sports players who have had their final season stripped away from them. I did not intend for my first year, first scrimmage of the year to be the last time I would lace my cleats. I had no idea that that game would have been the last due to me choosing to continue my education at the University of Florida next year and stepping away from baseball. I am very upset that I have already had to, had to hang up all my gear and cannot fathom having to hang up my cap and gown without a proper ceremony. I was blindsided by my season ending and now have been blindsided by the announcement we will not have a physical in-person graduation whatsoever. For these reasons, I respectfully request that you please reconsider your decision regarding graduation and implement one of the many alternatives proposed by Class 2020 President Skylar Pedraza. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Raymond Anderson. I thank you all for allowing me to read these, and I truly hope that everyone gets to enjoy walking across the stage with their families, getting to see them, and take great pictures with smiles on their faces. Thank you all very much for this evening. Be safe, be healthy. Do I have a motion to close open session?
Second.
I have a motion in second. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, I call for the votes to close this work session at 10:30. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Thank you all very much. Mr. Stray, Mrs. Wright, Dr. Kane, thank you all very much.
And just FYI, for that one student that you stopped reading, you, we're off, yes?